Thank you very much. I'll bring this meeting to order. We'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Here.
Carmody?
Here.
Slaffin?
Here.
Regan?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Tada?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Here. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Okay, so the agenda is gonna get a little wild at the end. It's gonna run as listed until item 10. Then after that's gonna be item 12, the Board of Ed budget item. Then we're gonna go into executive session to talk about another Board of Ed item, and then we'll talk about the lease after that with the council discussion regarding our budget process at the very end. All right, so the, and just so members of the public know, so the Board of Ed, if you're here to talk about the Board of Ed item, the budget, there's no public comment during the workshop portion of the meeting. You are welcome to comment at the public question and answer at the beginning, which is three minutes per person, 20 minutes. All right? Madam Chair?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve or accept consent agenda items 3A through 3P.
All right, motion made in second by Councilor Regan. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion's carried. No items removed from the consent agenda. Public question and answer. Does anyone have anything for the council? Sir? I'm gonna address for the record, please.
Melanie Rusati, Nine Platt Drive. Although I am a Board of Education member, I am not here in that capacity. Today, I'm here to speak as a 40-year resident of Wallingford. I would like to comment on Agenda Item 10 and offer a general statement on budget allocations. First, Agenda Item 10, consider and approve appropriation of ARPA funds in the amount of $1,091,000. I'm asking that the council consider not voting on these items as proposed by Mayor Savoni's budget. I'm sure many departments and people have varying opinions as to how these one-time dollars should be allocated. But in reviewing the proposed items to be covered by the remaining ARPA dollars, I notice that there seemed to be a lack of equity of distribution of these dollars among town departments. In fact, almost all of the ARPA dollars and the telecommunications tax revenue are being spent on projects for the Fire Department and Public Works Department. The Fire Department would be getting $527,000 in ARPA dollars for an ambulance, power stretcher, shift commander vehicle, EMS commander vehicle. The Fire Department would be getting $1.2 million telecommunications tax revenue for a new fire quint truck, for a total of $1,727,337,000. Their budget was reduced by $1,149,400 by the mayor, still with an increase of $577,930. The Public Works Department would be getting the following with $430 in ARPA dollars, a plow truck, a mini excavator. The Public Works Department would be getting $600,000 in telecommunications tax revenue for a vacuum truck, for a total of $1,030, which happens to be the amount that their budget ask was reduced by. In no way am I saying that any of these items are not needed. What I am saying is that town resources should be allocated in a more equitable manner. For example, the Board of Education budget was cut by the mayor by $3.9 million. Perhaps some ARPA dollars or telecommunications tax revenue could be used to fund some of the many desperately needed capital projects, like boilers in the town schools. Highland Elementary School students actually lost a full day of instruction this school year due to boiler issues. This is just one example. There are many worthwhile projects across many departments that deserve consideration for funding. I implore you as the town council to please consider how ARPA dollars are utilized and how town budget dollars are allocated. I believe a town budget is a reflection of what the town values. It is a value statement. For the second year in a row, I come to this meeting based on resource allocations, it seems the town does not value our town children, youth, and families. Although this may not be the case, the budget indicates differently. Youth and Social Services budget was reduced by $120,000. Parks and Recreation budget was reduced by $45,000. Board of Education budget reduced by $3.9 million. Every department that serves children and families in this town was cut. I ask that you please reconsider allocating town resources more equitably to reflect the true values of our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Jason Michael, Meadow Street. I just have a few questions because I truly don't know the answers, but I think it's the consent agenda items K and L. They're the vac trucks, and I say that plurally assuming that we're allocating money for two industrial vacuum trucks, one for one department, the sewer department, one for the Public Works Department. And I just didn't know if it was... Do we have a need for two $600,000 vehicles? One for each depart-- are we using them on the same day? And is it absolutely necessary that we can't investigate sharing a $600,000 specialty item truck? I noticed that one is asking for a bid waiver. Is that right? Not the other?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Kindly.
There are one and the same vehicle. It's one vehicle.
So it's just one?
So the item 3K funds the purchase, and because the Sewer Division had a specific request for a specific vehicle based upon its performance characteristics, the council has to approve a bid waiver so the specific vehicle can be purchased.
Oh, thank you. It confused me because it had two different departments, and I didn't know if it was two different trucks. And the second question, although I asked in January and it got some chuckles, but...
I apologize. I have a further clarification. There are two different kinds of vacuum truck. You were correct. One goes to Public Works, and the other one is for the Sewer Division, and they do serve different functions. The Sewer Division truck is a specific request because it performs a certain way, and the the Public Works truck is for a different purpose.
Oh, they don't operate as the same tool?
No, the Sewer Division truck has to go much deeper into the sewer lines, which are different than the storm drains, which...
Thank you. I appreciate that.
They serve two different purposes, and there are two different sources of funding. My apologies for the misstatement.
It's okay. So I asked when you guys got installed in January, and I waited three months, and I guess I'll just ask again, but are we going to get Wi-Fi in this room?
So that's a good question. The mayor and I have had several discussions about that. I think at some point we will. I mean, as you know, he's the technology person's coming on board soon, and so I think it's all a part of whatever the technology plan is gonna be. But as you know, the council has Wi-Fi now.
Well, yeah, that's my point. Like, it's here.
Yeah, and so I guess the discussion was about how do you do it securely so that the council could have a separate channel from the public if you're gonna have a public Wi-Fi, but it is certainly on the radar.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? End of public question and answer? Old business. Mr. Farrell, do you have an update on the Hidden Brook Lane situation?
The Law Department has provided revised easements to developer's attorney. He's been out of his office, so we haven't spoken to him. We've provided him with a list of things we will need, including certificate of title, subordination agreements. This will take some time. Getting subordination agreements from banks often takes a long time. But we're continuing to work with that and involve in it. But he needs to get back to us from what we've told him we need.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. May I have an update on technology?
Yes. We are waiting any day now for the results of our technology survey from our consultant. We have made a decision and hired our information technology director. His name is Andrew Winters. He's coming from Proton Energy here in Wallingford, and he will start on May 6th.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Item number seven, discussion possible action on a water rate change from the Water Division. Gentlemen, you wanna step forward? If you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves to the record? Larry Zabrowski, Commissioner. Rick Hendershot, Director of Public Utilities.
Neil Amake, General Manager for the Town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Divisions.
All right, gentlemen, what do you have for us tonight?
So we will just jump right into it with the presentation that was provided to the Public Utilities Commission last Tuesday evening during a public hearing. I will point out the town council can follow along on the screens, or they were provided a PDF copy of the presentation with their agenda packet. So when we started this, one of the questions that came up was, what are the historical Water Division retail rates? And so we went back to July, excuse me, June 1, 1994, through July 1, 2023, the current. And for the typical customer, there are two parts to their Water Division bill. One is the basic service fee, and one is the consumption charge. The difference is the basic service fee pays for those non-supply and treatment charges. So think of it as the envelopes for your bill, the bill paper, stamps, et cetera, non-production items. So going back to June 1, 1994, you can see the basic service fee was $1,551. In June 1, 2002, it dropped to $1,527, and since June 1, 2007, it has been at $15.11. So for the past 17 years, the basic service fee has not changed. Excuse me. We will focus, and I will point out, we will focus on the 5/8-inch residential meter customers. This makes up 94% of the meters in our system, so that is where our focus will be. So then one of the Public Utility Commissioners asked us to take a look at the Consumer Price Index. So the Consumer Price Index only goes back to 1995, so we use that basis of $15.51 for a quarterly basic service fee. We apply the CPI all the way through July 1, 2023. You can see it is $31.92. So essentially, since 1995, the basic service fee has not been keeping up with inflation. Switching to the other side of the typical bill, we will look at the historical consumption charge, going back all the way to 1994. It was $2.04. Over the years, there were a series of increases, and then you can see, beginning in 2007 all the way through 2015, there were annual increases. So the consumption charge has not changed for the past nine years, since June 1, 2015. So put that into perspective for all Water Division customers within the Town of Wallingford. The bill has not changed, or the rates have not changed since that time. Your bill may change depending on your consumption. Again, the Public Utilities Commission asked us to look at a consumer price index relative factor. So the red line there, so you can see from 1995 to around 2010, the consumption charge was below the CPI. Around 2010 to the current, the consumption charge was slightly above the CPI. And so if you look at the historical mean quarterly water bill, and so this is a quarterly water bill, it is not a monthly water bill, so I think that's important to remember. So you can see through 2001, $76.71. The drop between 2001 and 2002 is we did a statistical analysis, and the median quarterly water consumption for a 5/8-inch residential customer changed from 3,000 cubic feet to 2,400 cubic feet. And we increase again. You can see, you know, we had the rate increases through 2007 through 2015, and then June 1, 2019 to 10-1, 2020, you can see there's a large drop. That again is a change in the median consumption by 5/8-inch residential customer. We went from 2,400 cubic feet per quarter to 1,600 cubic feet per quarter. There's a statistical analysis done of over 40,000 data points to get to that. So another question from the Public Utilities Commission was, how does our quarterly, how does Wallingford's waterly bill compare to other utilities? And so again, we looked at a 5/8-inch meter, 1,600 cubic feet per quarter. Hold on. Okay, there we go. Sorry, jumping ahead. But I want to point out that the Wallingford Water Division, along with the Wallingford Sewer Division, as well as the Wallingford Electric Division, are all operated as fully ratepayer-supported accounts. So the management strategy is predicated upon the operation of the Water Division, as well as Sewer Division and the Electric Division, as a business, three separate businesses. So operate and manage the Water Division as a self-supporting standalone business, the definition of an enterprise fund. So all operating and capital costs, as well as debt service, are supported through the revenues generated by Water Division charges. There's no supplement by utilization of tax dollars. Then another question that comes up is, how can we compare? Well, an apples-to-apples comparison, particularly of other municipal water utilities, is difficult as revenues generated through tax revenue may be utilized to fund operations, specifically pension obligations, basic service expenses, capital projects, or debt service, for example. So I want to point out, and we've discussed this before in the budgets, Water Division, Sewer Division, Electric Division, three separate utilities, basically three separate companies, three separate ledgers. Everything the utilities pay for is revenue rate-generated, wages, salaries, benefits, pension, debt service. There's no tax dollars. So we made a comparison as to how Wallingford Water compares to other water utilities. Put my glasses back on, thank you. So currently, under fiscal year 2324, you can see the median quarterly water bill for residential customers is $80.55. The mean quarterly water bill for all the columns in front is $1,11.44. So Wallingford Water is below the median. But let's break this out a little further. And so the solid portion of the column is the basic service fee, while the dashed portion of the column is revenue or, you know, charges from the consumption charge. So pay close attention to how small Wallingford's basic service fee is. Most other utilities are greater than Wallingford. So quite frankly, Wallingford is not covering our administrative behind-the-scenes charges through our basic service fees, very dependent on the consumption charge, which then is dependent upon Mother Nature, quite frankly, rain or drought. So we started this process about eight months ago. Let's talk about our study purpose and process. So develop user retail rates that result in a financially and operationally sustainable water system. Objective number one, the Wallingford Water Division must be financially self-supporting. Retail water rate should be sufficient to ensure funding of an appropriate level of proactive system rehabilitation, replacement, and improvement. The Water Division shall maintain sufficient reserves to meet the division's minimum cash reserve policy to provide per-rate stabilization in unplanned expenses. And then Water Division revenue and the strategic utilization of retained earnings shall meet the financial needs of the Water Division over time, and we'll get into that a little further. So where did we start? We started with the fiscal year 2022-23, operating in capital budgets. We have a debt amortization schedule for outstanding debt, and we used our customer count and consumption data. Some key study assumptions: adjustment of labor costs at 90% of budgeted FTEs. So labor and benefits expenses were, for lack of a better phrase, reduced to 90% across it. That is a conservative, and it's a valid and reasonable assumption that we will not have 100% staffing. Reasonable escalation in operating costs and capital expenses, declining water uses. You know, this was in the budget note for the upcoming budget. Year-over-year water consumption decreased by 5.25%. And then no growth in customers. You know, we do not see an increase in residential, commercial, or industrial growth. Let's look at our minimum reserve, which is established by the Public Utilities Commission. 13 weeks of operating and maintenance expenses equals $1.7 million. Outstanding principle on debt service, currently it's $195,000. Very small debt service. Then we have an emergency reserve of $1 million. Or for lack of a better phrase, that's just a what-if. We have current liabilities of $1.486 million and a prior-year capital carryover of $3.841 million. In the model, those are shown as current-year expenses. So you put it in the model. Let's look at the red line. So the red line, total revenues under current fiscal year 2224 rates. That really should say total revenues under the current rates as established since June 1, 2015, was the last time they changed. So you look at the red line, current year, current fiscal year 2324. The Water Division is covering their operating expenses. They are not covering their debt service, and they are not covering the capital projects. So right now, the Water Division is reliant upon retained earnings to balance our budgets. The town council and the Public Utilities Commission have seen that with the current-year budget for the past few years, as well as the future budget. Projecting out through fiscal year 2829, it just gets worse. Next year, revenues under the current rate structure will not even cover our operating expenses before we layer in debt, before we layer in capital, before we layer in future debt service. And notice, future debt service is very small. The Water Division has essentially taken a capital cash approach. So what happens to our retained earnings if we continue on this path? Essentially, the retained earnings in fiscal year 2526 are barely, so in fiscal year 2425, we're slightly above the minimum cash reserve policy. In fiscal year 2526, we are below the minimum cash reserve policy. And in fiscal year 2627, there is no retained earnings anymore, and essentially, the Water Division is insolent. Let's talk about American Water Works Association meter equivalence. And so we'll get a little nerdy, a little wonky here, but we use the 5/8-inch residential meter as a unit of one. And so if you look at the third column, that gallons per minute, you can convey 20 gallons per minute through a 5/8-inch residential meter. Look at a 1-inch meter. Well, a 1-inch meter can convey 50 gallons per minute. So when we look at the American Water Works Association meter ratio, we use, it's 2.5. So if you have a 1-inch meter, you can convey 2 and 1/2 times more water than you can through a 5/8-inch. Look at the second column. The current ratios between our meter sizes to establish basic service fees is based on the cost of the meter, not on the function of a meter. So you look at a 5/8-inch meter, 20 gallons per minute, that's essentially a one-lane highway. You look at a 1 and 1/2-inch meter at 100 gallons per minute, that's a five-lane highway. So currently, we're at a ratio based on the cost of the meter. The Water Division is recommending to go to an AWWA meter ratio. I will point out, when the Sewer Division rates were adopted effective October 1, 2020, we did move off the cost ratio to an AWWA meter equivalent. So when we look, so I want to tackle this column first, or this graph first. When we layer in the proposed rates, as we will discuss in a few minutes, and those are shown by the green line. So we've already discussed the red line. You can see our total revenues under the current rates will not keep up with the Water Division operating expenses, debt service, or capital projects. The green line is where the total revenue is under recommended retail rates, and you can notice that the green line does not capture all of the future expenses. So that difference will be made up by the strategic use of retained earnings for rate stabilization. That was a five-year chart, so we look at a 10-year chart. And so you can see that even under the proposed rate structure, the Water Division will not pull in enough revenue to cover expenses until fiscal year '31. So essentially, for the next six years, the Water Division will use retained earnings to stabilize rates. So we go back. We went through. The Water Division established a basic service fee based on those non-production charges. We have a cost of $33.66. We then apply our ratios, our AWWA, American Water Works equivalent ratios, 5/8-inch all the way down to 10-inch, and those are the new basic service fees. Then we used assumptions based on future wage, salary, benefit, heat, electricity, chemicals, other goods and services, and project the basic service fee through the next six years. You may notice there are two vacancies in the table, or 6-inch and an 8-inch meter. Currently, there are no 6- or 8-inch meters in the distribution system for our customers. Water Division staff thought it was prudent to establish rates for 6- or 8-inch customer should we gain one in the next six years. Rate-making process takes four and a half months approximately, so we wanted to, better safe than sorry. Looking at the consumption charge? Looking at the consumption charge. We're currently at four dollars and nine cents. The recommended and the proposed consumption charge next year is four point four nine. Then it increases from that based on the model assumptions. Fire protection charges? So there is a third element to our revenue. And so these are fire protection charges based on hydrants or private fire line services to a specific property. So this is called the main curve. I'll walk you through it. So the main curve is the percent of gross revenue to public fire protection charges. And so basically, it's a ratio of what your peak domestic demand is and then what you layer in what your emergency fire flow is. Because you want to be able to provide your customers with both domestic needs as well as be able to respond to fire emergencies. So the guidelines are the two red lines as shown on the chart. Minimum percent of gross revenue should be six percent. The maximum percent of gross revenue guideline should be thirty percent. My students, you know, I teach water resources. We actually do do the calculation in that class, the quiz later. So the current Water Division fire service revenue is, what we gain, is seventeen point nine percent. The per, the calculation, the objective or where we should be, should be twenty point five percent. So the difference of the two point six between the blue line and the green line will be made up over a ten-year period fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five to fiscal year twenty thirty-three dash thirty-four. We did not want to make that change in one year. So essentially, it's point two six percent per year. So let's talk about fire protection charges. Why do we have them? So it's to recover capital costs and applicable operating expenses to provide adequate fire protection throughout the service area. Constructing water treatment facilities, transmission and distribution main pumps, and water storage tanks larger than what is required for everyday domestic use. What the main curve basically tells us is the entire system, from the reservoirs through treatment, transmission, and distribution, is twenty point five percent larger than what it needs to be simply for domestic use. The water supply, treatment, and distribution system has been sized for both sufficient water flow and pressure. It's very important. In the water industry, you need both the volume as well as the pressure to service both domestic water needs and fire protection needs. We have, as of last count, one thousand three hundred forty-one public hydrants, four hundred ninety-seven private hydrants, and three hundred and four private service lines of various sizes going into buildings. And the location of a hydrant is neutral to how a fire hydrant is utilized. A public hydrant can suppress a fire on public or private property, while a private hydrant can fight a fire on private or public property. There are no unique or specialized costs borne by the Wallingford Water Division to provide potable water to private fire hydrants. And the ability by the fire department to fight a fire and serve the resident, serve Wallingford residents, businesses, and schools is not based on property boundaries, but rather the quantity and location of fire hydrants as determined by the fire marshal's office, be they public or private hydrants. The use of a public hydrant or a private hydrant to suppress a fire supports the community as a whole. Both public hydrants and private hydrants benefit multiple residents, visitors, and structures located adjacent to or near a hydrant. There's a shared interest by the community and by the fire department having unfettered access to either type of hydrant. When the fire department pulls up to a hydrant, they're not questioning whether that hydrant is a public hydrant located within a public right-of-way or private hydrant located on private property. So looking at our reasoning, by including the costs assigned to both public-private hydrants and public hydrants in the consumption charge, all who benefit from fire protection share the financial burden for the additional costs, which is oversizing the water system for fire protection, whether there's a public hydrant or private hydrant near residential drilling, commercial building, or other structure. The Water Division system has been designed and built to provide all customers with adequate fire protection. I want to point out, if you, if there is a private hydrant, the installation, removal, repair, and/or replacement of privately-owned hydrants and fire service lines is and will remain the responsibility of the property owner. Where are we going with this discussion? So the recommended private fire service charges are listed here, but you will see at the bottom row, the quarterly hydrant charge for private fire hydrants as of July one, two thousand twenty-four is no longer. So as we've walked through, public and private hydrants serve the community. That cost to oversize the fire suppression system, the fire protection, is then being rolled into the consumption charge, which is applicable to all customers. Currently, if you have a private hydrant on your condo association, your townhome association, you're paying for the public hydrants through your consumption charge, and then you are paying additional for those hydrants in front of your property. When we undertook this rate-making process, we want to be fair, reasonable, and equitable. The Water Division feels this is that approach. So we talked about our fire protection revenue. We're currently at seventeen point nine percent. Our goal is to go up to twenty point five percent. This is only a nine-year chart, so you can see. So the blue columns are where we should be with our fire protection revenue. The red line is where we'll be per the rate model. So it would be quite a quick increase. So we are going to layer that in over ten years. So impact to retained earnings based on the retail rates forecast. So we took a look at this. This breaks it down a little closer. So the ending fund balance is, of our retained earnings, is shown in green. And then the red is the minimum cash reserve policy. So our minimum cash reserve policy right now is about three million dollars. So we had one point seven million dollars in thirteen weeks of operation and maintenance expense. We have a debt service, current debt service, one hundred ninety-five thousand. And then we add a million, just because. So three million dollars. So you can see retained earnings are decreasing. And the reason for that is, over the next six years, with the proposed rates and recommended rates as approved and adopted by the Public Utilities Commission last Tuesday evening, the Water Division will use approximately three point zero three million dollars in retained earnings for rate stabilization for the next six years. Put another way, the Water Division is not cash positive until fiscal year twenty thirty-one. And even then, we're seven years out, and per the model, it's only cash positive by forty thousand dollars. So the Water Division has a good amount of retained earnings. Those retained earnings were paid in by the customers. Let's use that retained earnings and not increase the rates as fast as we need to. That's basically what this chart says. Three million dollars over the next six years for rate stabilization, including one point two million, one point two-two million dollars for next fiscal year, starting July one. What is the customer water bill impact? We don't have a screen, sorry. All right, so the typical, you know, what is the impact going to be? Again, we'll focus on the five-eighths-inch residential customer, the median usage of one thousand six hundred cubic feet per quarter. And again, that is ninety-four percent of our customers. So currently, the median water bill is eighty dollars fifty-five cents. With the rates for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, the median water bill will move to one zero five point five zero. So that is a quarterly change of twenty-four point nine five. That's per quarter, so we'll round up. It's hard for me to do as an engineer, but so that's one hundred dollars per year. After that, you will notice the year-over-year change is between twenty and twenty-five dollars. The goal of this rate model was the first year, when we unwind the American Water Works Association rates and basically reconfigure the basic service fee. After that, was to have a nice glide path, for lack of a better phrase, in the quarterly charge or the year-over-year charge. And if you look at that second column, the rates as of July one, two thousand twenty-four, most of that rate increase is from the basic service fee. You may remember, you go back to the CPI table. If we had followed the CPI, it should be around thirty-one, between thirty-one and thirty-two dollars. Pure coincidence. We actually finished this rate model about two and a half months ago when we were doing our budgets. Public Utilities Commission did not ask us to layer in the CPI until about three and a half weeks ago. So that is a good gut check. But at the bottom, I want to put the monthly equivalent for water. And I know people get, you know, combine their water and their sewer bills, but we treat the Water Division and the Sewer Division as two separate utilities. We have two separate ledgers. So the monthly equivalent for water, currently twenty-six point eight five as of July one, two thousand twenty-four, thirty-five dollars and seventeen cents. We put that on there because we want people to think about, what are they paying for cable? What are they paying for streaming? What are they paying for their iPhone "I don't break it" charge? You know, as well as your mobile phone bill. So we're on a, you know, part of the challenges with a quarterly bill is you pay it, and you have two months off. And you pay it, so it seems higher, but we want to put a monthly charge there. And then we'll look at the historical proposed Water Division rates again. So here you go. So this looks a lot steeper than it is. But again, since nineteen ninety-four, the Water Division has not moved out of that fifteen-dollar range. That's just amazing. We look at the consumption charge or the cost per one hundred cubic feet. And it's going up. But again, through the strategic use of retained earnings, that rate stabilization, that slope in the light blue lines is not as steep as it could have been. And again, just the median quarterly water bill for our typical customer. Again, the big drops are because we reconfigured how much people are using. So let's go back to our comparison. So again, we'll look at the all-in. The dark blue, Wallingford Water Division is currently at eighty point five five. The light blue, one zero five point five zero. The mean quarterly bill, as shown on this chart, one twelve point zero six. And I will point out that all these are of March one, two thousand twenty-four. Other water utilities are adopting rates, so it's a bit of a moving target. City of New London, the very left, very left column will be increasing their rates. We've heard almost two hundred percent. Manchester is having a rate increase. Bristol had a rate, adopted their rate increase last week. So these are rates as of March one. Wallingford is still below the mean. And I wanted to just split out again the difference between the basic service fee and our consumption charge. Basic service fee, the solid, the consumption charge is the hatched. Our basic service fee is capturing our administrative charges, but it's a good gut check, we're more in line with our peer group. And I know Councilor Tada was saying she would see Penelope later. So that is Penelope, my dog. She has her Yukon scarf on the night of the championship, and that's the old-school logo. So with that, I will answer, Rick, myself, Mr. Zabrowski will answer any questions you may have.
So Mr. Emick, this is already passed by the PUC, correct?
That is correct.
Therefore, the only action the council could take would be to reject the agreement at this point?
Yeah, I missed that.
The only action, the only meaningful action the council could take would be to reject the agreement, correct?
Yes, correct. And per the charter, would take seven votes.
Right, okay, perfect. All right, questions from the council, moving on to Councilor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a motion is not in order, correct? We would not, we would not be making a motion to accept. I do have a question. First of all, thanks for Penelope. Penelope was the best part of COVID during our Zoom meetings. I have a question on the, um, sorry, I'm going back, I'm trying to find the slide. It was on the, um, here we go, slide number twenty-one. So on the recommended quarterly basic service fees. There it is, thank you. The last line there, meter size, ten-inch. That one kind of jumps off the page because the current is four hundred ninety-nine dollars and eleven cents, and the proposed would go to seven thousand sixty-eight dollars. Can you just explain how many of those there are, who that affects?
That affects two, and I will not be identifying. We have two ten-inch meters in the system. I will not be identifying the customer.
Okay, that's fine. Is that, in your estimation, is that going to be a financial burden? I mean, that's a huge jump for that one. The rest of them seem, you know, not, not as fiscally, not as big of a fiscal impact. That seems...
Correct, and we're conscious of that. So let's, so I think there's two, let me answer that. So let's look at this right now, so...
Would you just identify the slide number just so I can?
Oh, so I don't have the slide numbers.
Oh, that's all right, that's all right.
So it's up in the, so let's look at the AWWA meter equivalents. So currently, a ten-inch meter is thirty-three, we're only using a ratio of thirty-three point zero three. The ratio should really be two hundred ten. So that ratio or their new basic service fee is being driven by that ratio. It is a large industrial customer in town, probably the largest, if not the largest. So while it is a large increase, I think compared to all their other capital, operating, and maintenance expenses, I can't speak to their financials, but they should be able to absorb it. I also will point out that, you know, for the past several decades, we've been undercharging.
If, if any of those commercial businesses were, were to come to us after the fact and say that that's a problem financially, is there, is there any way to backtrack? Is there any, I just, I hate to hit the businesses that hard with that huge...
I know who this is. I can assure you, it's not going to put them out of business. They won't lay anybody off because of that change in their water cost.
But is that, is that something that can be changed later, or no? Once he's going to affect that, that's it?
You would have to go through the formal rate adoption process again. And so we did talk about this. So if you lower the basic service fee for any of our large customers, four-inch, six-inch, eight-inch, ten-inch, then essentially, you would be shifting that revenue to either the basic service fee of other customers. I wouldn't want to move it over to the consumption charge. So go back to rate-making. It should be per your, we don't have different, you know, the electric division, they have different classes, residential, large municipal, small municipal. Those who invoke the charges should pay the revenue. We'll go back to fair, reasonable, and equitable. But you would have to, you would have to redo the entire rate-making process. And then, quite frankly, shift that burden to other ratepayers.
Yeah, and to get back to the point Neil made earlier, that the water system exists upstream of every, every place where water can come out, be it a hydrant or a meter, or the facilities beyond the...
Mr. Anderson, they can't hear you in the mic.
I'm sorry. So the point is that a ten-inch meter can move so much water. Its share of the fixed costs of the Water Division are then so much incrementally larger than all these smaller meters that that's a fair and appropriate charge for a customer of that size who, who has the capability and occasionally the need to move that kind of volume of water into their operation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fishbein.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for coming here tonight. I also want to thank you for getting us the PowerPoint in advance because it gave at least me the opportunity to, to look at this stuff beforehand. Is there a reason why the pages, the numbers are like all over the place as far as, like I'm looking, I'm looking at a page that has a number in the bottom right-hand corner. It says thirty-five. It's actually a three on top of a five. The one before that says thirty-one. I'm just trying to figure out, because I'm going to ask you about a particular page, and if...
Yes, so this, this PowerPoint was actually reconfigured from a pre-existing PowerPoint. Yes, so this, this PowerPoint was actually reconfigured from a pre-existing PowerPoint. We added in pages. It just, that was the one tiny aspect that did not meld together.
Okay. So I just want to bring you to, um, it's, it's page thirty-nine of fifty-nine, but it has a number thirty-five in the bottom right-hand corner. So, um.
The one that says reasoning continued at the top?
Yes, sir.
So there was an operator error operating the laptop, so I'll work off the paper version for a moment.
No problem. I just want to be on the same page, so to speak. Okay. So I was told that as a portion of this whole thing, that the water division is going to be taking over responsibility for all fire hydrants on private property.
Well, I don't know who told you that, but they were wrong.
Okay.
That is just completely incorrect.
Okay, that's, that's fair. And, and that's why, that's why we're here?
No, no, it's, I, I mean, it's, we wanted to just point that out.
That's just such a basic thing. I'm not quite sure how you learned that, but it's patently incorrect.
That's, that's fair. And we're just going to walk through that, okay? Because I see on this particular slide, it says the installation, removal, repair, and/or replacement of privately owned hydrants and fire service lines is, remains, in parentheses, the responsibility of the property owner. So that's, that would be in line with what you said here tonight. And I just wanted to sort of work that out. So, you know, I'm in favor of what's here, okay? And I just want to establish that, you know, you have told us that the water division cannot sustain the present without raising rates because you're using reserves in order to sustain the system, right? That's basically what you're here saying, okay? And I just want to be able to make sure that the water division isn't taking on an additional role. Okay, and that's fine. So it's apples-to-apples responsibilities, right? So the only variable that's changing is, over the period of time, we haven't raised rates. We've used reserves to sustain numbers. And now the chickens are coming in to roost. Is that basically fair?
It is.
Correct.
Okay, then that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Tessa.
It's, it's fair to, thank you, gentlemen, by the way, for being here. Uh, it's, it's fair to say that unlike private corporations, anything that one, and I'm keeping this simple for, as, from a layman's perspective, anything that would be considered a profit from your operation can only go into reserve funds. It does not go to shareholders.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you. So, so.
And unlike the electric division, neither the water nor the sewer division makes a payment to the town based on their sales.
Understandable. It just, I think when some people hear prices go up, it's very easy to question why and wonder who's getting, who's benefiting. In your case, it's, appears to me, and been around a little bit, that, you know, you looked at something, and Counselor Fishbein closed out by making a good point. We've gone a long time without adjustments that perhaps should have happened earlier. But there's only a certain amount of reserves you can maintain. They're required. They're responsible. They're, they're prudent. And many times over the years, all of our utilities have sort of subsidized rates with what they might have considered, um, excess reserves to try to give it back to the ratepayers. And now there's been a determination that going forward, there are, you know, the current rate structure is not sustainable. So we need to raise the rates.
Correct.
But there is nothing in that calculation that is related to shareholder profit. It's operational. It's in order to keep us sustainable, operational, and a, a, able to maintain, um, a, a, a reserve amount that is, is necessary.
And more importantly, actually, maintain the physical system.
Exactly.
Water, water's a lot like electricity. When people flip a switch, they expect the light to come on. When they open a valve, they expect clean, safe water to come out of it. When they flush a toilet, they expect it to go away.
Yes.
And fresh water fill it. So that's what we're here about.
And I agree with all of that, and I, and I appreciate.
And you're right. Other than the prudent operating concept of the systems, enterprises should run in the black, there is no profit motive.
Exactly. And that's, that's important to note. And I appreciate you presenting that. I also just want to make clear that while by governmental structure, we need to, we have the opportunity or the ability to provide some oversight and approval to this and/or denial. This is something that the professionals in our operation have worked hard on. And the commission that we have, whose responsibility is to do this, have all agreed that this is the right way to go. So I have no problem with this. I appreciate you going to such great lengths to present it to us and the public. And, uh, and I'm all set. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, um, part of what I was going to ask was, uh, asked by Counselor Tada with respect to the ten-inch. I was just curious how many people there were. I, I, I had a couple of questions. One about the service fee and the modeling you did. I mean, I, I would imagine you also incorporated, like, you know, I know that eventually we'll be able to have more electronic access to our billing and things. Is, are those things considered in terms of operating costs? Like, say hypothetically, if we could all just get an electronic water bill and then not have to have a stamp and an envelope and paper? I mean, are all those factored in?
Not implicitly, no.
So, and, and it hasn't happened yet. So again, I was, that was just one of my questions. The other question I had was that based on the July 1, uh, medians that you provided, is that just sort of falling in line with fiscal year? Or is there any seasonality in the way that the median cost goes up or down? Like, for example, does your three-month bill, say, in fall differ from your three-month bill in spring for comparability's sake? Because maybe you use a lot more water during the summer.
Well, that would be the reason your, your consumption changed.
Oh, yeah. No, 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 I understand. But I'm saying you're presenting July, and I'm wondering if those.
As of July, it's not during July.
No, forgive me. You're presenting the hypothetical each July. And I'm asking if you're presenting a hypothetical in July, if you push that to, say, September, would those numbers look a lot different? Would the differences change?
No. Because it's based on an assumed consumption amount of the median customer, which I believe Mr. Emwick stated, which now has been calculated to be sixteen hundred cubic feet per quarter.
Well, so, so the July 1 just coincides with the fiscal year.
Okay.
So that's, that's it. And when we did the statistical analysis, you know, to reach one thousand six hundred cubic feet per quarter, that looked at several years. There were several criteria that went into it. You had to be, we had to have so many quarters of the same customer at the same residence. You know, we went over, it was either forty thousand or forty-four thousand data points. We plan to do that again. It's a, it's a task we do when we look at the sewer rates. So we're hoping to do that again that fall. But the July 1 was just coincidental with the fiscal year. And we looked at a year's, a year's, um, data for everyone. You know, a full four quarters.
Okay, all right, thank you. I, I wasn't sure if it was like a snapshot in time that you would then hypothetically push out? Or if it, as you said, it's forty thousand, which I'm assuming has to do with the number of customers as well as the number of bills and then a rolling average. Take, yeah, okay. I think that's all the questions ahead. Thank you. Oh, actually, sorry, if I could. I was just curious, though. Are the, so aside from the ten-inch, uh, meters, the, the ones that are smaller, although the six and the eight we don't currently have, all of those do jump up a bit compared to the five-eighths, which I realize is ninety-four percent, and that's mostly just residential. I was just curious, is that in line with other areas in terms of service fees? Did you, because those, I mean, you can, I don't have it right here right now, but it was on the same slide that Counselor Tada referred to. Oh, it's actually up there now. So, yeah, you can see, like, the four-inch one goes from, like, one sixty up to eight hundred dollars.
So there's one meter in the system at that size? It currently is not in use.
Okay. So these are.
A customer that has both a groundwater well as well as a meter to supplement should something happen to the well. Again, it's an industrial customer.
Okay. So while some of these look like rate increases, but they could be similar to the ten-inch, similar to the four-inch, it could be for a handful of people.
I would put both the four and the ten-inch customer in the eight-figure.
Okay.
Business zone.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going back to the ten-inch, uh, real quick, a, as well as the six and the eight, you know, we're trying to be competitive in enticing net new businesses to move into the town. Is there, uh, any analysis of how competitive the six, the eight, and the ten-inch are for new businesses versus surrounding towns or state as an average?
We have not done that analysis. So generally, we focus on the residential customers, the single family. You know, we currently have one four-inch meter, zero-six-inch, zero-eight-inch, and two ten-inch in the system. If you are pulling, if you need a six or an eight-inch meter, that's a massive facility.
Understood. Can you put into perspective the type of, uh, peak consumption fee for a ten-inch user? I mean, I'm looking at a, a seven-thousand-dollar service fee. Are we talking about a fifty-thousand-dollar consumption fee? Is there proportionality there?
One second. That customer is in the six-figure payment on a quarterly basis to us.
Sure. So not as significant of a hit proportionally.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
That customer accounts for eight percent of our revenue. We've had discussions with this customer already.
And they were okay? They were fairly negative?
We've had preliminary discussions. We haven't broken this down. We wanted to have the approval from the Public Utilities Commission first before we, before we sat down with them. Again, based on the size of their facility, their labor, the amount of trucks going in and out of that facility, it'll be a hit. I think the biggest, or the one complaint we have from them is lack of bill, online bill pay. Because, quite frankly, they pay from overseas.
Understood.
I'm more concerned with that customer not meeting the deadline of April thirty or May thirty-first by the time they receive their paper. Actually, they don't even receive a paper bill, I'll be honest. We email their bill to them.
The electric division does the same thing with this customer.
That is how important that customer is to us.
We work around the paper process to help them pay us on time.
And delivery if you need to. Thank you.
Again, I, you know, I mean, I think, and I understand your point. It's two customers, it's two meters out of over fourteen thousand. They're big, but, you know, where we make our revenue is from the five-eighth-inch customer.
And remember, it's based on industry, nationwide industry standard ratios. Starting with the five-eighth-inch meter, declaring that as that sort of unit one, that's the smallest, the most basic meter we have, and then ratioing up from that to the volume of water that can move through a ten-inch meter.
And I would say water.
Standard water rate making coast-to-coast nationwide.
And more and more utilities are adopting the American Water Works equivalencies, the AWWA ratios. That is where the industry is going. Wallingford is actually behind on that.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to stay with this slide and, and just focus on the five-eighths. Um, because as we, that is the most of the residential. So if I interpret, well, this is the way I interpret this. So we are increasing the basic service fee for these customers as of July 1, 2024 by over a hundred percent. Is that, that's fair, right?
Correct.
Whether or not it's fair, it's, it's accurate, right?
It's, it's a correct calculation.
Okay.
That's a very small denominator at fifteen point one one.
Okay. And then on top of that, we're increasing the consumption charge by approximately twenty-five percent. And that's anticipated to be almost annually.
I think the percentage increase is closer to ten percent. Four point zero nine to four point four nine. Forty.
Okay. If I take fifty cents and if the base is four hundred, and that's like a quarter. So that's how I was doing the quick math.
An eighth, that's about an eighth, so.
Yeah. So is there any way that we could, or have you guys looked at the usage charge increasing by more than a hundred percent? Because after that, we sort of, it's not that much, right? So the next year, it's only increased by a dollar, right? A year after that, it's another dollar. Have we looked at how much it would cost just to maybe cut that bubble in half?
So you could cut the bubble in half. We're using one point two, the model says we're using one point two, two million dollars of retained earnings next year to rate stabilization. So you could use additional retained earnings. That means future year increases would be greater. At some point, you need to collect X dollars, whether you do it over two years or four years or six years. Those revenues has to, that, that revenue has to come in.
No, I, I, I understand that. But if we're going from fifteen, we'll just round it off, to thirty in July. And you took, I don't know how much it would be, but you only went to, let's say, twenty-two in July because we had an influx of money to cover that, then you're going to naturally get to the next step anyway.
So let's, so we can talk about how we came up with the thirty-three point six six. So that is, there are over three hundred line items in the budget. Staff and our consultant went through over three hundred line items, determined if it is applicable or not applicable to the basic service fee. If it was applicable to the basic service fee, then we assigned a percentage to it, anywhere from five percent all the way up to one hundred percent. That thirty-three point six six rep, represents the minimum to capture what the non-production expenses are by the water division. I see your point, that that, that thirty-three dollars and sixty-six cents was calculated based on the operating and maintenance budget line items. About eight hours was spent going through that line by line to then assign those costs into the basic service fee. So if you lower that, then you would be more reliant upon your consumption charge, which vis-à-vis you'd be reliant upon Mother Nature in order to meet your revenue needs. That basic service fee represents the absolute minimum for administrative charges that we need to collect. It, I don't know, it's, maybe, you know, I've been working with the model for months. Maybe I'm too far into it.
The, the way to think about it, the basic service fee is intended to collect the revenues that the division needs to have a water system available, even if not a molecule of water moves through any meter.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. I'm just also looking at the.
You're, clearly, you're concerned about customer impact. I don't, can't read the page number either. But if you go to customer. But if you go to customer water bill impacts towards the end, it's, um, it's the twenty-first page on my paper copy. So I'm guessing maybe that's about slide forty-two, forty-one, maybe.
It looks like slide four thirteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess forty-one. Customer water bill impacts at the top, that's the title of the slide.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm getting to-
I put it on the screen. It's on the screen in front of you.
I think Jesse is the only one who can see the screen, but anyway. With all due respect to my colleagues, I, I do have that slide now.
Okay, so the, the accurate way to describe this is the typical residential water bill, beginning in July of this year, will go up from eighty dollars and fifty-five cents for the quarter to a hundred and five dollars and fifty cents for the quarter. Now, that's an increase of twenty-five dollars and, I guess, twenty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. If my public college education let me do that math that fast. What was that, the change?
But how is the consumption cost calculated on that line?
It's, it's the, it's the consumption rate times sixteen hundred cubic feet of usage, which is what the median customer uses, with a five H inch-
It's the average, yeah, okay.
It's the median.
Median, half, half the people use at least that much or more, and half the people use that much or less.
I'm just looking at even on that slide, the quarterly change, so it's, it's large, but I understand. We have to sustain the system, so.
Well, so it's-
Well, I wanted to put it in the proper perspective and context. It's twenty-five dollars a quarter.
Understood.
Eight dollars and thirty-three cents a month.
Yeah, okay, by quarter, twenty-five, yeah, okay, no, that's a good point.
And I, and I will point out, the fifteen dollars and eleven cents, essentially the fifteen fifty-one, has not moved since nineteen ninety-four.
No, that was staggering to see, so. All right, well, thank you, thank you.
And I don't think we were called down here to explain why we, why the water division hadn't raised rates in ten or fifteen years, so.
Agreed.
A consultant once told me, they'll never thank you for, for winning or, or being successful, but you'll always be criticized or asked about if you lose or, or make a bad move.
I don't think you've gotten any criticism, I just, you know, I'm looking to learn and to make the right decision. And I do appreciate the fact that we have, you know, I tell people all the time, we have a water company, we have an electric division, we got an airport. We might as well just secede from the state of Connecticut. So I can get food in through an airport. So anyway, but thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So you know other questions from the council, any questions from the public? Going back to the council. There's no motion on the floor, so I suppose this item is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate your time. Moving on to number eight. Discussion possible action regarding advertisements in town parks and on town media. Vice Chair Tatta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Crouch, are you here for this item or a different item? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but, next item, all right. Basically, this item, I just wanted to, it, it came up during public comment at our last meeting from a member of the public about the advertisements on the town website. It just brought some questions to mind that I just wanted to maybe clarify or discuss. And I assume the administration probably have the answers to these, but my first question is just how, if, if we're having businesses advertise on the town website, how are we going about doing that? So did we approach, did the town approach certain businesses that, that they want to display on the website? Is this open to any business in town who wants to participate? How, what's the process?
So this program was developed by the EDC six or eight months ago. The contractor, I believe, is CGI. And they are hosting, all you see on the town website is a link to CGI's website. So CGI hosts the town videos, I believe there are a half a dozen. And then, and at no cost to the town, CGI makes its money by selling the advertising that is, you see on the perimeter, the border of the screen. And it's completely driven by the contractor. They, they solicit the businesses, actually, while I was still practicing, solicited my business to see if I wanted to put a video up there. For various reasons, I thought it was a bad idea. But they, they are independently running the sales and collecting the revenue, and I believe they collect an annual subscription fee for the advertisers that are on their site. And they're allowing for businesses that they approach.
Okay, and that's covering, so we're, they're hosting our website, we're not paying for that because they're, we're allowing them to get those sponsorships, basically?
Yeah, they are hosting our videos, and that costs us nothing. They're getting their revenue from the advertisers.
Okay, so if, if a business wanted to advertise but wasn't approached by them, they would just contact CGI and-
Excuse me, we could connect them, or the EDC could connect them.
Okay, and then how are we, have we thought about how we're going to handle maybe a business that might be controversial, or maybe that we, someone might not think we want to display in a link to our website? Has that been addressed?
That will be a test case, and we will field that as best we can, and it may determine the future of the program.
Perfect, thank you, I appreciate that. My next question. Okay, so this, this led me to a topic we discussed several years ago, went through ordinance committee and never really went anywhere. Advertising at the parks in towns, the ball fields. So we had talked about this. You know, other towns have banners on the, you know, on the outfield, and I, I did discuss this a little bit this week with Mr. Crouch. We had discussed, you know, is there a possibility that if we did want to entertain that, that then that income could go into a fund that would then go to the, the ball fields? And maybe, you know, it pays for expenses, it pays for a new dugout, or it pays for certain things that we want to do at those parks? Is this anything that, this, your administration might want us to entertain again, or that we've, we're thinking about?
Yes, with legal advice. And I, I believe we have comment from the law department.
Yes, the law department is working with Park and Rec, develop rules and regulations that would allow for signs only during specific events and only in the space already reserved by that advertiser. So the sign wouldn't be up otherwise, and only in its space that it had reserved.
And I, I know, you know, same topic, I think we had talked about this at ordinance, and I believe Attorney Small said there, there is some sort of a government carve-out, but things that we wouldn't want advertised, you know, especially, particularly where, where children are. There is a carve-out for that, we can address that?
Uh, I'm sure there would be, yes.
All right, great, that's, that's really all, I just wanted to, you know, the, the topic came up, and I just wanted to, to bring it up again, so it sounds like things are moving along. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So since the topic never came to the council, where are the rules regarding the advertising on the, on the website?
There was an agreement entered into through Mayor Dickinson and the company doing it.
Okay, so there is an agreement that is available through the law department that we could review as far as ascertaining what the rules are here?
Yes.
Okay, so why was it decided, once again without the council, that there would be no revenue to the town for selling advertising on a government website?
What was determined is that we're following the same thing that many, many towns throughout the country are doing, and the Economic Development Commission, through its due diligence, contacted many towns in Connecticut to ascertain how they were handling it and whether they were satisfied and happy with what was going on. And I understand that universally, every town using it was actually quite ecstatic of how it worked. And I, I know, because I have contact with towns along the shore at Madison, Branford, Guilford, all use it and are quite happy with it. I didn't talk to any of the towns, but I was in the town hall at Madison and mentioned it to people there, and they said, oh yeah, it's great, so that's all I know.
Great, in, in what aspect?
That they're very happy with how it works.
Okay, so in what aspect though? Is it because it's bringing business to the town? Because restaurants are flourishing? Because they might be making money? There's various reasons why somebody would be happy with a program, and I'm just-
I got the idea they were happy of how it showcased the town itself.
Okay, so what happens when we get into the situation, perhaps, where we have a lawsuit, we have a tax appeal, we have something as a governmental entity involving one of those advertisers? Since, once again, this didn't come to the council for us to discuss. Is that addressed in the contract?
There are many aspects addressed in the contract, I don't have it in front of me right now.
Okay, do you think, I mean, I, I just, I don't want to have to do a formal request, can you just get to the chair?
Sure, it's not a problem, both myself and Attorney Einhorn worked on it.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have at this point, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else from the council? Oh, Mr. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification, this is not a government website. This is an independent website run by an independent organization that happens to provide services to the town as far as videography, a certain amount of production, et cetera, that the town, at its choosing, I would assume, can pull those videos if we, if we deemed they were not appropriate. Or at the very least, we could pull the link to that website from, the only linkage is the, the, the town website does have a link to the external third-party site. We could sever that at, at any time, should we have an issue with one of their advertisers, some of their messaging, et cetera. Otherwise, it's just like the trillions of other websites out there producing and displaying content.
We certainly had approval of the video that was prepared for the town. But again, it's not our website, I can't remember all the particulars of it.
Sure, is the video itself property of the town? And I guess if we take a look at the contract, we could un-
Yeah, I, I don't remember all the particulars, sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I mean, my, my concern, if it was a standalone, yes, but I'm, I'm on the town website, and there's, I mean, it's, it's embedded on the town website, right? It's the video tour of Wallingford, and then you go to explore Wallingford, and that's where these things appear, so.
It's a link. What, what you see is a very pretty link, but when you click it to go see the video, it takes you to CGI.
Understood, the, the original, there is actually a Wallingford video tour on, which is, you know, we are Wallingford. And then there are links on the right-hand side, one of those is, is explore Wallingford, and that's how you get to CGI. I mean, we see it, saw this last time, I mean, me for the first time, was at our last meeting, but, you know. So, I mean, I could see if it was a standalone, that there wasn't linkage, I just, I look forward to seeing the contract, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel, any members of the public?
Jason Michael Meadow Street. I can speak from some experiences, from somebody that's been up there for years, that I was part of the tip, tips of the Trident that came at this in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And when we finally made a push far enough, we sat through the three-hour ordinance meeting, and then ended up being told we had to go to planning and zoning. So someone might want to start that engine before we go any further with talking about advertising in public parks, because that's where we were going to end up. We got as far as having a workshop almost set up with them to figure out how we could move forward, and, and then it was, it was no longer an item of concern with Parks and Rec Department. But if, if we are going to move forward with this, which I'm excited about, it makes total sense that a business owner like myself can have an advertisement in, in a park in town that's going to essentially give money to the town to use for the park that will advertise my company to bring money to me, it's just simple. But, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Attorney Farrell said that we're going to have to be present to put the sign up for the individual event on a space that's rented, that's empty most of the time. I mean, I think the Board of Ed tried this a long time ago, and I know from friends who were going to do it, it just became a huge pain in the neck. And if anyone's here that can speak on it, please do, I think it ultimately fizzled. But again, we're doing it again. We're tying our shoes in knots before the race starts. I mean, it's awfully convenient for, for members of the town or administrations or prior administrations to quote the actions of other towns when they're in favor of something that other towns do. Everybody's doing it, working out, they're happy. Well, I spent hours on the phone when the Park and Rec was pushing for this with probably fifteen or eighteen other towns that do it. And my prime goal at the time, because we were told it was a free speech issue, was to find out, how do you handle it? When, you know, Marlboro wants to advertise in a park, which is ludicrous. It's pretty self-bolicing, but they, they simply said, we tell them no, and they laugh at me. Town after town giggled when I asked the question. Then we found out that it could be government speech, and it's not held to the First Amendment rules, so we could tell people no. But now we're saying that you're going to pay for an ad in Center Field, at, 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 at Vets Park, and, and you have to go take it down? What if, what if my kid's not in Little League? It's just, it's just silly. Every other town that does it, does it successfully. I'm not seeing headlines about lawsuits and, and activities that would be detrimental to the town or the business that's advertising. It's just us starting out in the muck again for a program that makes sense for business owners locally and the town itself. And I think if we're going to do it, it should be done in a way that is successful and mirrors the towns around us who are more than happy with the way they're doing it. If we're going to use that comparison for things that the administration is for, or, or the town attorney is in favor, whoever is, like this thing online, well, it works for other towns and they're happy about it. Well, so does advertising year-round or, or seasonally with a permanent sign. And it, it just doesn't make much sense to have to, well, you know, I don't, my kid's twenty-two, but I got to run up to, you know, I got to run to the pickleball or Harrison Park and put a sign up for an hour and a half Little League game and then take it back down. It just, it won't work, I mean, let's be honest. Who's going to do that? It just doesn't make a lot of sense. If it's a yearly thing, great, if it's a seasonal thing, great. But if we're going to do it, I suggest a workshop that really makes it where it's going to work and not just be talked about. Thanks for the extended time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gross?
I'm gross Long Hill Road. A question, I'm confused on, you said the videos are controlled by CGI? What videos? Is the video that you made, is that under CGI's, or does the town control that one? Your welcome video for the town?
So CGI is hosting that?
They host all the videos that are on Wallingford, Connecticut website?
On the town website, you click a link, it takes you to a CGI-hosted site where you see the town videos, and as has been pointed out over and over again, the advertiser videos on the borders.
I'm not talking about the advertiser ones, I'm talking about the ones that are town videos, yours and other ones. They're on CGI's website because it's cost-effective for the town?
Yeah, they're, they're hosting them, there's a fee for that.
Why, I know there's a fee to host a, a website, I mean, it's not expensive, I mean, Mr. Regan's up there, he has an idea, he probably has a website, so forth, so. A basic website is not, I, I'm just confused why you would have somebody outside the town. Now you have a information technologies officer coming in, or I would hope that the town should be in charge of our own going on to the website. Ours, your, your videos. I mean, not the CGI, I- I mean, not the CGI, I, there's nothing wrong with this program. I think this is a great program. I don't think the way it was handled by the town was the right way to handle it. The council, of course, should have been notified how it was being done by Mayor Dickinson or Mayor Cervone should have notified you that this is happening and that should have been publicly noticed for businesses and not-for-profits in the town of Wallingford. Because since we had this last meeting, I've spoken to CGI and, um, they don't know who the businesses are in town. They don't know who the not-for-profits in town are. They just look to see what they are and try and pick who they think should be on that website. I spoke to one business in town who was called by another business in town saying, hey, you should probably do this. And so he called CGI that way and got onto the website, got onto this. I, I'm just a loss of how the town does things. It's just assuming to be really haphazard. Other towns do do it. It's nice, but the town's website, the town's videos themselves should be controlled by the town. They shouldn't be on a third-party website, whether it's CGI or whoever, just to save a few hundred dollars a year. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Back to the council? Seeing no further discussion, we'll move on to item nine. Discussion regarding a draft RFP for the Historic Railroad Station. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Do you care to introduce yourself?
Don Crouch, Economic Development Specialist, along with Joe Mira, EDC Chairman.
Okay. And did you have a presentation you wanted to start with or would you like to take questions?
You can just go right into questions.
Sounds good to me. Questions from the council? Mr. Carver?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Uh, thank you for the work you, you did on this. I think we're all very excited to see where this goes. I was curious about how this RFP is being publicized.
Sure. Purchasing Department will, uh, post it on the portal and let people know that they can bid on it. And then I'm assuming will also, uh, EDC will also promote it as well on some of our social media outlets.
Who, who's determining the timeline for the RFP?
Uh, that'd be, uh, along, working with Purchasing. Once we get to that point of, um, everybody's fine with it, then we could talk about Purchasing on the, on the timelines.
That, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so you're not seeking approval of this document tonight? Or you are? You are seeking approval?
I mean, if, if, if we're, uh, good to go, I mean, the, the only thing we have to do is, is really put the timelines, uh, and the dates. Um, but that's more of a, uh, purchasing matter. Um, and then there's the one section under, um, page, page five. Hopefully my numbers are correct. Page five, there's a placeholder for after the fire marshal's going to do a reinspection and then DPW has their, um, update as well. I know they've been working on things, so we didn't include where they were now just because it didn't make sense to put it in now and then in a week it's going to change. So that, that'd be the only real, uh, significant change. But that's just more for accountability and transparency.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion that we approve the RFP for the Historic Railroad Station reuse project as presented, um, with allowable minor changes in the highlighted sections. Second?
All right. Motion and second. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it was page five that I, um, because I didn't see that we were going to be approving this. I was sort of waiting for that language. What, what's the timing on that?
Uh, the last I talked to the fire marshal, I believe he was going this week to re-inspect. So I don't know how long it takes him to put the report together. Um, and then Mr. Baltramitis, um, should be shortly thereafter. So you know what, what we could do is, you know, send that section out to, to the council so you could have a look at least of, of their information. But it's more technical in the-
The fire marshal inspected the property on October 22nd of 2023, right?
The first, the first time is.
Well, that wasn't the first time.
First time in, in the fall of 2023.
The last time that it was, because a year before that, he had approved the entire building. But anyway, we'll stay away from that for now. I'm just, what are we anticipating? You know, the report is the report is the report. So, you know, whoever's going to take this on, I would hope is given access to that last report. Are we expecting the fire marshal perhaps find more stuff or?
Uh, more for transparency. So whatever his report is, including that, because I know there has been, uh, work done by, uh, Public Works, uh, since October. Um, so it's really, we want to have as much information as possible to be transparent to the potential developers so they know what they're getting into.
All right. No, and that's, that's certainly fair. Um, and then the Public Works update is, is that sort of what you were referencing?
Correct.
Okay. So it, it's basically the fire marshal's inspection, Public Works signing off or, um, I guess confirming that they did work, fire marshal signing off on, yes, that work is done to the appropriate, um, and then perhaps, you know, checking things off. Okay. So that's, um, certainly helpful. So you think within the next month, this is going to be out there?
Uh, I did talk to Purchasing. Um, once, once we do publish it, they're figuring it's going to be about a two-month timeframe, uh, between the release of the RFP, um, and then having responses in and walkthroughs and things like that.
So you're expecting that the timeline is, release this in about a month? There's a window of two months for bidders? Within that two months walkthroughs, I'm just-
Correct. Um, so it'd be-
Within that two months, during the bid process is when the walkthroughs would be taking place. So when the bid process closes, walkthroughs would have been done. Otherwise, there's no bid.
So yeah, so, uh, on page four, uh, the proposal timeline, so we'd release the RFP, there would be an informational session, site visits, uh, time for questions, uh, and then, uh, there'll be a due date. And then from there, number four would be, uh, the interviews and that would be, uh, more for the council on selecting a date and, and, uh, you know, that process from there of, of going through the recommendation.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm looking at, so the release of the RFP is in approximate, approximately a month. Within that, uh, window of release and submissions, there's a walkthrough, um, because you have to anticipate what you think you're going to put into this thing. Um, so then that window you're, you're estimating is approximately two months, right? Um, and then, um, I mean, interviews and we go on. Do you know what the, is this similar to the time period for like the American Legion Building? I know I was here, but I wasn't.
Uh, I'm not sure on American Legion, but I know the, the Kaplan-Wooding parking lot, that whole area, uh, similar timeline, um, when I looked at their RFP.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the council? Questions from the public? Seeing none, uh, motion on the table. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allinson?
Yes.
Harmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa? Wrong.
Uh, yes. So the motion is unanimous. Uh, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Happy birthdays, huh?
Moving on to number 10. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve an appropriation of ARPA funds in the amount of $1,091,000 from revenue federal grant account to ARPA municipal account.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Regan.
So as you are aware, we, um, reviewed the budget for items that might be appropriate for ARPA funding and from the department requests, um, we are asking the council to approve an ambulance, a power stretcher, a shift commander vehicle, an EMS command vehicle, a generator for the emergency management facility, a plow truck, a mini excavator, and the police MFA keys, uh, which are very multi-factor authentication device. I'm bad with acronyms, but I got that one. And what they will do is they will, uh, allow officers to continue to, uh, access, um, their devices remotely. Uh, there's also the potential for a component allowing the, uh, MFA keys, um, to be the, uh, access key for the new police station. So it, it may have a multipurpose function in addition to allowing their laptops to remain connected.
Questions from the council? Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there, Mr. Mayor, this question for you. Is there an effect on the proposed budget, um, if this passes? Or in other words, were any of these budgeted for and now will, will the budget be reduced if they're funded this way?
They, they were part of the department requests for the, uh, fiscal year 24, 25 budget. Uh, so they've effectively reduced, uh, the overall budget, um, similar to the item that was on the consent agenda. There was a fire truck funded there. That would have been a half a million dollars next year and a half a million dollars each of the two following years, which is how, uh, we've often funded a large capital purchase like a Quint fire truck. So that will reduce the next three budgets by a half million dollars.
Great, thank you. And, but those were already removed from, these items were already removed from your proposed budget that we received, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And with that consented item, same thing or that's in your proposed budget?
So to be clear, um, the Vector truck was completely in the budget. In the proposed budget, only one-third of the Quint vehicle was, uh, in the, the department request, to be clear. Was only one-third of the Quint, uh, fire truck was requested.
So, so you already had removed these before the budget we received, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Perfect. I am, I'm in support of this. I think it's, I think it's great we're using ARPA funds for, for items like this, as I've said all along, because this is, these are things that we would have to tax, um, our taxpayers on that now we do not need to tax them on. So I think this is great and I'm in support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Testa. Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Reynolds?
I, I guess I, I have a question. I guess it would be for the mayor. Being new, so I'll, 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 uh, I'll call that before I say anything else. Are these types of expenditures to the tune of a million one usual year over year? I mean, are we, are we to expect that these types of things will continue to be additional costs that we're going to incur each year? Are these like once every 10-year purchases? Are these things that we've been putting off for a while? I'm just, context, I guess, is just what I'm looking for. Or do we have context as to how, what the long-term replacement plans of these things are?
Of the items in this request, the only item that, uh, comes up regularly would be a plow truck. You know, we have a little more than two dozen and I think our oldest operating plow truck is, uh, from the late 90s, you know, and time to retire. So we, we do try to replace a plow truck every year, but the rest of the items are really not annual items.
Okay. Because that, I mean, that to me just is my concern while we save taxpayer money this year, we don't save them anything. In fact, we charge them more in following years because we're not, we're not budgeting, I keep saying this, but we're not budgeting for the stuff that we're supposed to be replacing. We're using money that we're getting from other places to pay for it. Long-term, it just feels unrealistic as to this is how we're going to pay for things moving forward. Like unless there's a pandemic every 10 years or unless there's some windfall with some other kinds of money or things like that, I just, I, 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 I'm somewhat reserved. I would, I, I just feel that it's not necessarily, um, sustainable. And that's my fear. Um, if we continue to do this and pay for stuff long, over time, you know, that next year, like hypothetically, if we just take this same budget and move it forward, we're going to be short a lot of money, just starting off next year. So, all right. Thank you.
You know, to Mr. Reynolds' point, um, uh, your logic is sound, uh, in that this wouldn't be sustainable. But I think having been here for a while, what you find is that we would have items in the budget like a fire truck. And the first thing that, that would get cut, uh, when you need to find money in the budget would be the, the portion of the fire truck that was being funded that year. So I think in many circumstances, we kick the can down the road on a lot of items. So while your logic is sound, I think the, the practice was that like, say that the third of the ambulance we were going to pay for this year is the thing that would get cut, right? And then we would kick that to the next year. So I think that this is sort of a way to bring things back together and pay for some of these things upfront. You know, it does put us in a, in a better situation, but we're behind on the funding of some of these items to begin with. So I think it, you know, you're not wrong, but I think if you watch it over time, you'll find that it's not necessarily, um, going to put us in arrears as much as it is trying to catch us up to, you know, where we need to be with some of this equipment. My two cents. Uh, anyone else on the council? Mr. Laffin?
Yeah. Just to kind of piggyback what the chairman was saying, uh, Council Reynolds, so you feel better. You're right. It is not sustainable. But because we're, we're aiming to go with one-time purchases on these items, what you'll also find every year, so every year there's some truck that we're paying a third of. So it just won't be this truck anymore. Maybe one of the plow trucks gets bought a year sooner or it gets on the calendar sooner. And then you'll also find in a year or two, there's probably some other gimmick that money comes in from somewhere else and, and we're playing with that too. So, um, I, I think that's, the, the key is that these are not recurring costs that they're one-time purchases and it's kind of, we got a little bit of a break. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Testa?
Thank you. What I'm, um, trying to muddle through is the fact that we, we, we have ongoing capital expenditures every year naturally. But, and so does the Board of Education. Haven't gotten there yet, but there is, you know, there's the elephant in the room about to show up. And as we talk about that, we know that, um, and I'm, I'm separating operational expenses from either side. I'm talking about capital expenses. And, um, so we, we, we know that that's a big issue with the Board of Education budget. And so if I, if we are using all of our potential, you know, call them windfalls on all of these municipal expenses, we're not considering the, the same type of expenses that on the Board of Ed budget, which let's face it, it's all, it's all our money. So that, 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 I'm just giving you a little background into where, why I'm, where my conflict is, is coming from as we continue to talk about this. And so, and I'm used to seeing budgets where there was a long-term replacement plan for just about everything. And every year you would, we would say a third of a truck, a third of an ambulance, a third of a fire truck, whatever it might be. And we would accumulate the money, we would buy them. And that incremental or over time purchasing strategy met the needs appropriately. No one ever came to us and said, that's not working because they need that truck today. They knew that they're going to get that truck in two years. So if I look at this and then the upcoming one, where we're using the telecommunications money, is it, can I assume that for the- money, is it, can I assume that for the next three years, nobody's going to need anything? Are we not going to hear from any of these departments that, are we going to hear that they're okay for three years? Because we spent all this money this year paying full price and getting it all cleared up with the windfall money. And that would be great. I suspect not, but that would be great. So I mean, that's, that's one thought. Have the departments come to the administration and say, oh, thank you, you're buying the truck, you're buying the ambulance, you're buying the dish, you're buying that? I'm good for the next four years. Or next year, will we then now see? Let's get back to replacing things on an incremental basis. Does that make any sense? Because we've always been on that kind of schedule. And I know the fire department gave us a nice report on where we are. And believe me, I have never voted against anything when it comes to equipment for public safety or public work. So, and I will always support them. I'm just keeping in mind the big picture. And we're, this year, we're in a position where we are potentially putting a, the school system in a very difficult situation. So if we can utilize some of this windfall money to also pay for some of the one-time expenses that the board has, instead of spending it all on municipal, the municipal side of the budget, it might be worth discussing. But if we approve it all tonight, then it's not a discussion anymore. Because it's not, it's not a budgetary discussion. We're not talking about the budget anymore. Pulling this all out of the budget and cutting the check and getting all this stuff paid for, it's great. I don't think it's a bad thing, but I just think if we, if we were able to, you know, talk about it in a bigger picture, I don't know, maybe we might make some different decisions. Maybe we might say, you know what? You know, let's put a half, half a truck. And then maybe I'll hear that you have to spend the money by a certain time. That's okay too. I'll, I'll accept that. But when we get the windfall money in, maybe portioning some of it to a more aggressive purchasing strategy on municipal expenses would be worthwhile while some of it is still available to offset what we all have to agree is a pretty drastic cut that the board is going to have to absorb. So that's, that's my conundrum right now. I don't have anything to suggest other than, um, I, I would, I wouldn't mind if we put a hold on this and the next one until we finish our whole budget discussion. That, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This money doesn't deplete the ARPA funds. There's still a little in excess of 1.3 million dollars of ARPA funds unallocated. They do have to be committed by the end of this calendar year. Mr. Chairman, you yourself suggested that we might consider ARPA funds for the boilers for the school district. You know, we are mindful of the capital projects that were in the school's budget and my letter failed to include that we will seek other funding for them. If the council approves some ARPA funding for the boilers, fine. We do believe that the ARPA projects, I mean, I'm sorry, the Board of Ed's capital projects would be appropriate for bonding as well. So one way or the other, the other, we will take care of the school's capital needs.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Allenson?
So I'm not, I'm not exactly super new or super old here, but in my experience in the past two years, this is a bit unorthodox that we are approving spending funds from, that were removed from the budget. I get it that ARPA is like, everybody's calling it a windfall. That's not what it is. It's actually insulting to the millions of people who died to call it such a thing. So I would like to know, know why in particular are we discussing this ahead of the budget and can't it be tabled until after we've discussed the budget? I mean, I'll be happy to make a motion to table it. Is there some urgent need for a plow truck in April? Is there an urgent need for this fire truck right, right now? I totally understand, and I know that there's, there's a supply chain and blah, 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 and we'll talk about that, I'm sure, related to COVID still. But I just think that this is a bit unorthodox because it really does remove a whole million dollars from our capability within the budget. So I, I would just, I guess I would just like to know why now and instead of just waiting.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
So these were all requested by the departments for the coming budget year, for the 2425 budget year. They are not in the budget. They were removed in anticipation of them being paid for this way. This doesn't have to happen tonight, but it would be helpful to the town's operations to know how we're going to pay for these items since the department heads determined that they were needed for the coming fiscal year for them to operate. So, you know, this just puts some security in what we need to do to operate the town for the next fiscal year. But it doesn't have to happen tonight. I mean, I think the last, with the last budget, the ARPA funds that were recommended for expenditure, you know, reducing the budget, that happened within weeks after. So it doesn't have to happen tonight. It just gives us some predictability about what we're going to do in the next fiscal year.
That's, I, I can appreciate that. And I, like literally, my thought was, why do we need this immediately? Because we are really only three weeks away from possibly approving or reworking or doing whatever we're doing with the budget. So I just thought it might be, it, it just might be, and I realize also that this wasn't in the budget because it was removed, thinking that we would use it for this specific purpose. I, it would just assume a 100% agreement that this is what we want to use the money on as a council. So, I mean, we can continue in this way or we can not. And like, I don't know. I'll make a motion to table it until after the budget? Table this discussion until after the budget is approved?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's being seconded, so the new, motion is to table item number 10 until after the budget process. Discussion on the motion? Mrs. Tatta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of my concerns with tabling this is that we, we did have items in the current budget, so last year's inaugural proposal, in a similar situation. Some of them were funded very shortly thereafter. Others of those items were not funded until, I believe, two meetings ago. So we went almost an entire year with items that departments requested, removed from the budget, the council agreed that we would use ARPA, and then it took about 10 months for those to actually get funded. So my concern with delaying this is that the departments aren't going to get what they need. And again, it's, these are items we have to buy no matter what. It's saving taxpayer dollars instead of, instead of our people having to be taxed on this. We have the funds available. They need, the funds need to be earmarked by the end of this year. So I would not be in favor of delaying this. Thank you.
Mr. Fishbein?
There is benefit to knowing where you're going. But we have more than one department in this town that needs to know where it's going. And it appears that, you know, I've been up here, I think I'm in my 15th year, and how many years have I tried to get the basketball hoops at Highland School replaced? I think the neighborhood finally had to take it on themselves. We keep on hearing how our, our middle schools need significant work. Those are capital expenditures. The next item on the agenda, we're going to be talking about similar stuff. This is a lot of money that we're talking about here. And I agree. I mean, do you need a plow truck, I mean, at this time? No. I mean, I think we can all agree upon that. I think we need to have a sit-down and figure out where our priorities are. Certainly, public safety is a priority to me. But I'm a little put off that our schools seem to be the redheaded stepchild. I'll tell you, I'm in court with families a lot. And over the last two weeks, I've had two cases where we had a mom or a dad living in Wallingford, a mom or a dad living in a different town. And I can tell you that 10 years ago, it wasn't a question where that kid was going to go to school. What I heard over the last two weeks is Wallingford is not the greatest anymore. Schools are falling apart. You read about it in the paper. I'm not proud of that. Finally add the discussion. So I do support the motion, at least for where we are today. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Laffin?
Thank you. I think the, in Councilor Tatta's example of concern, that was just a willingness or unwillingness on behalf of the executive to pull the trigger and execute those, those funding, those funding options. The funding was set aside, but that was put upon the administration. It didn't come from the administration. So, and it didn't happen until the administration changed. So I don't think that is a concern to worry about right now. Or that we need to worry about, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Allenson?
I completely echo that statement. I have no, I have absolutely zero concern regarding Mayor Servoni's ability to follow up with us after the budget on these items that he's requesting. I think that he has always proven to be a very thoughtful and timely person. And I don't think that we should hold the sins of one against another.
You know, on that note, I mean, I have no issue waiting on this item either. You know, I've spoken frequently about, you know, considering this administration the same as the last. We're sort of continually fighting the last war on a lot of these topics. So I think that this would be a good example of one where it wouldn't hurt to wait because the mayor seems okay with it. So, so I'm fine setting this aside for now. I think we need a plan probably on the municipal items and on the Board of Ed items. I mean, I think they handed us $100 million worth of spending, which is quite a bit. But I mean, there's some real like red meat items on there, like boilers and so on. So I think we probably have to come up with a plan as a, as a town to figure some of this stuff out. Anyone else on the council? Members of the public? Okay, so, Mr. Gross?
Gross, Long Hill Road. Question on how the budget works. If you have, we'll use the Board of Ed because they're here, and they ask for $100 million. And the mayor says, no, we're going to offer, and not you, I'm just using these as examples, Mayor Servoni. The Mayor Servoni says 90 million. You can in turn, he can veto that. You guys can say, we want the 100 million. He can veto that. You, you in turn, with seven votes can override the veto. Correct? Okay. Then shame on the council. I mean, the mayor, we know who the mayor was before and he always vetoed it. But they've come before you before in the past, and we all know the conditions of these schools. And we know that the budgets have been cut before by the mayor. You had the ability to override his vetoes and you didn't. I understand we have a strong mayor system in town here where you need seven votes. But, you know, you guys could have done some of this stuff in the past and overridden the mayor. Also, not only is there $13 million on ARPA that you're spending this way, there was 12 point, I don't remember the point, 4, 3 million, that you had from CRA that you spent the same way on fire engines, et cetera, that the mayor did that over the years. This is going to catch, there is not going to be a gravy train eventually. It is going to catch up to the town, as Councilor Reynolds says. You have to make a plan to pay for these things. And we're going to be a world of hurt one of these days because there hasn't been good budgeting on the town. We've been relying on this $25 million over the last 10 years from CRA. Councilor Fishbein's here long enough, Councilor Test has been here long enough to remember those funds, and Councilor Laffin. You've used that money to fill gaps over the years with the mayor, and you're now using ARPA. You know, ARPA, as was discussed in the beginning, is a one-time thing, and the money hopefully was going to go to some, as many towns did. Many towns did some educational, they did some municipal projects. They also did things that were for the town. They did some parks. They did some recreational stuff that the town people could actually use, whether it was fixing up Marcus Cook or Cragman Park, whatever it was. Our parks are a disaster and none of the money's been spent that way. And you're not talking millions and millions of dollars. But it's just been a, I don't know what to say about it. It's just, it's sad how this has all been spent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So just to your point though, Mr. Gross. So the council did override the mayor's veto twice in the past eight years. I couldn't quote, don't quote me on the years, but I, it was, it wasn't this last term, but I believe the term before twice in a row. Not to the benefit of the Board of Ed?
I under, I understand, but...
Hang on one sec. So point two is on the, the CRA money. So the past, past mayor's practice was typically to reduce the Board of Ed budget, then he would take some of the CRA money and apply it to capital projects on their side. So when you look at the full education spending in Wallingford, it's not just simply their budget, it's their budget plus whatever additional money they were granted for other things. So I, I think, and I can't speak for him, but I think that his focus was on trying to reduce the, the year-to-year gains by adding money to capital items so that it would reduce sort of the overall budget increase from year to year.
12 million from our CRA did not go to the Board. Not all 12 million went to the Board of Ed.
No, no, 100%.
Okay. And what I was trying to say is that these boilers, the conditions of Lyman Hall, the conditions of Sheehan, they didn't happen overnight. These things have been an ongoing thing for years. We've known these schools, and I've been at this mic and other people have been at this mic for 10, 15 years about the conditions, especially Lyman Hall, and some of these, people don't even want to go in the bathrooms in Lyman Hall. That's how bad they are. It's not unknown. These are not unknowns that the town doesn't know about that hasn't been addressed for years. It's just unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Coming back to the council, Councilor Tatta? All right, I'm sorry, you're all set? All right, so the motion on the table is, or the motion on the table is to table. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? I would, I would say let's call the roll. Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tatta?
No.
Testa? Maron?
Yes. And I think, being that Councilor Allenson made the motion, I think you could put her down as a yes as well. Motion passes. Moving on, okay, so now we're going to move on to item number 12, Board of Ed Budget Review.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
If you could please, um, introduce yourselves to the record.
Sure. Danielle Belizzi, Superintendent of Schools.
Marla Roscoe, Chairman of the Board of Ed.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Carmody, this was your item.
Good evening. Being that the school budget is the largest part of our budget, I thought it was our responsibility to at least uh, talk to you guys about what's going on this year in your budget. I don't know if you wanted to present first, um, and then take questions from us?
Sure, that's fine. So what I did was just to kind of give everybody a little bit of background. I know, um, we were asked to come here and then on Friday I had received some questions um, that were, you know, I guess everyone here had submitted. So I thought it would just be easier to kind of put them into a quick little presentation to kind of answer the questions as I go through. So that's basically what this is. It's the questions that were given to me on Friday. Um, and I just kind of answered them so at least you can see, um, the answers to make it a little bit easier as we move through. So I'm happy to move through it that way. I sort of included the questions on the slides. Um, and then just had slides that pertain to the answers of each one. So if you'd like me to just go through that way, it's fine with me. And then we can obviously entertain any more or stop me as I'm going. So what I started with, um, on page three is basically just to give you an overview of what our ask was. So it says here, our revised sustained budget, and that financial cost is $120 million. The increase was the $6.5 million. And that gave us a percentage increase just for the sustained at 5.758. I say revised because we had talked for a while about the insurance, and I'll kind of get to that in a little bit. It originally started off at 15%, then, uh, it went down to 14% overall. I then listed what our strategic items are, which is at $104,000, uh, and it's a .709 increase, which gives us that total increase of the 6.467. I then included on the bottom, uh, what the mayor had allocated for us. So he allocated in dollar amount, um, the $3.4 million, which is a 3% increase. And then I shared on the last line there, the difference. Um, which leaves us here with the $3.9 million difference, if you include the strategic piece. Um, and it's a $3.1 million deficit or reduction for us in order to maintain what we currently have, which is our sustained budget. I just included for your reference on slide number five, uh, what our demographics are right now. So I just included for you the total enrollment of our district. What our special education numbers look like to point, uh, from last year to this year. These numbers are typically done around October, the beginning of October. Um, our 504 population, you'll notice our, uh, special education in our 504 population is increasing. Our ML students and our free and reduced numbers have increased from the previous years. Currently, we were at 1,0734 as a district. As of October, we're at 1,867. So you see in many of these areas, our needs for our students have increased as well. If I continue on to slide seven, one of the first questions that I received, and again, they're not in the order that I may have received them, but I just sort of put them together here. Uh, what portion of the proposed budget are locked by contract, uh, and the estimated amount is acceptable? So what I show you here, just to kind of, and there's a couple of slides that'll answer this for you, is that 79% of our budget is made up of salaries, um, for certified and non-certified staff and benefits. That makes up a total 79%. Uh, the other large piece of this pie that's illustrated here is our other services, which is 12% of our budget, which includes our transportation tuition costs. On slide eight, um, I started off with contracts. So as you know, in Wallingford, we have nine different unions. The ninth union, which is not listed here, is our food service union that's self-funded, so it's separate. So here's our eight unions. I just wanted to share with you the number of the members for each union. The contract wage percentage increase that's been negotiated for the contracts. I also included for each union, the total cost for each year. Uh, so you'll see the total cost broken up the first two rows. You have teachers and administrators. So you'll see the total cost there of 53, almost 54 million for the teachers. That's an increase of $2.1 million from last year. You'll see for the administrators, it's approximately $5.4 million. It's a $299,000 increase from the previous year. Under our non-certified staff, you'll see that we have the remaining unions listed, our paraeducators, clerical, custodial maintenance, managers, nurses, IT. Currently, right now, we're in contract negotiations for five of our unions. So I listed them as in negotiations because we're in the process of working through those and settling those contracts. The nurses is the only one right now that's, um, not going to expire at the end of this June. And so I included what their percentage is, their total cost, and then their increase. I did include the total cost for the other unions that are also in negotiations for review. I did calculate throughout this budget in our sustained, you'll see it in our contingency. You'll also see it on the next slide, on slide nine, where we sort of put for those five contracts that are in negotiations, an estimated percentage increase. We typically hold that in our contingency, which I know is a question that's also posed to me, so it'll come up later on in the slides. But that's also where we account for the change in those salaries that will be happening. So if you look at slide number nine, there were so many different ways to look at it, so I, I tried to give you as much information as I could and as clear as I could. If you look at slide nine, it lists out wages for certified staff, non-certified staff, our time staff, full-time staff. This is basically all of our staff. Um, and what that total operating budget cost is, which is almost $78 million a year. I listed what the increase is, which is $3.7 million. I also gave you the percentage of the proposed budget increase, which is 56.82% of the budget. I also gave you the total percentage of the entire budget that we requested, which makes up for the 64.85%. The second line is our health insurance benefits. Of all of our town departments, we're the only department that carries the health insurance benefits within our budgets. We account for it. Jim Hunt does not in his budget. So for us, the operating budget cost for just the health insurance benefits is $15 million. It's a $1.469 million increase from last year, which makes up 22.48% of our budget. Of the increase, excuse me, and the total budget of 12.53%. I went down the line to also include a lot of the items that, as we asked for, were contractual, that are things that at this point I cannot change. Transportation, we pay $7.5 million for our transportation, which I am very pleased with the company that we have. It's an increase of $396,000. Percentage of the increase is 6%. Total percent to the budget increase overall request is 6.27%. Tuition is at $6.7 million. It's a $400,000 increase. When we look at the tuitions, it's for our students that are outplaced and a lot, and that number there, a lot of that is based on the needs of our students, uh, meeting the needs of our students. It's also if a new student moves in from a different district and is already outplaced, we are required to continue to pay for that out service or outplacement service as to where they are. So then we just absorb that. So if a new student moves in with that, that is an additional cost that we did not plan for originally. Uh, you'll see services and maintenance are listed here. We put the cost of our utilities, which is 2.7. Um, our supplies, our social security, Medicare at 1.3 million, which if you total all of these up, gives us the $120 million. Which gives us the 6.5, uh, increase there. On, um, slides 10, 11, um, and 12 and 13, these are things when I presented the entire budget to the board that are also part of our budget drivers. They're also what we call either assumptions or uncontrollable costs for us. Um, so I listed them out here. I'm not going to go into every single one by detail, but I listed out our facilities and our operations, our technology. Um, but I do want to highlight on slide 11 for you, our special education cost, which is $10.7 million. Um, that's our mandated services according to IDA, our IEPs. Tuition is included in that price. Transportation for our students, assistive technology needs that they may have, outside evaluations, services and equipment. Uh, the next one down is our excess cost. So this has been something that, um, has been discussed a lot for us at the Board of Education, at many of our operations and Board of Education meetings. This excess cost grant is a grant that pays towns for their current year special education costs. It, it's costs that exceed the 4.5% times the cost to educate a student without special needs in that town. The state calculates and caps this grant, uh, based on the wealth of the district. So they use a formula. Currently, uh, our reimbursement rate is at 70%. So 70% of every dollar spent on a student above approximately $96,000 uh, is what we get reimbursed at that 70%. So if it's, it's 70%, let's just say of $300,000, minus the $96,000 per student.
Is that the, is that the original percentage that we would be reimbursed by?
No. So originally this year, um, it's changed a few times this year. It was originally going to be at 88%. We had originally calculated in our budget 80%. And then we were informed it's down to 70%, which is probably where it's going to stay moving forward. So as we went through our budget workshop process to bring it to this point, we had to continue to recalculate that particular piece of it. Um, on slide 12, if you take a look here, the two things I really wanted to point out on this slide is the crossing guards. This is new to our, um, budget. The crossing guards are typically in the police department's budget. Um, they are nine posts that are outside of our schools for our students and our parents. Um, this was a cost that was moved into our budget, so this is at $188,000. And the next item, which I'll also discuss later on, but it's here now, is the contingency. So as I said earlier, contingency is made up of, uh, for this year especially, the five contracts that are in negotiations. Um, we also have to go out to bid for our athletic trainers. Um, and we know that's going to be a significant increase from where we were before. So we're kind of preparing for that as we go through that process as well. On slide 13, uh, I am accounting for adult education. As we heard earlier, um, about the RFP for the train station, which is where our adult education program is located um, and will need to move. Uh, we have been in the process, and I know we'll talk about that after, of looking for a new location for the program. I did account for what a potential lease or some funding to put in there as to what that may be in addition to our budget, which is $153,000. And then also a one-time cost of some build out for any potential locations at $345,000. Uh, slide 15, one of the other questions that had come up was, uh, how much money did the BOE spend last year? And in the current budget year, on consultants, studies and lawyers? How much money is budgeted in the BOE proposed budget for consultants, studies and lawyers? So I just put them two together, past year's, current year. So I gave you, uh, the two years of 2022, 2023, and 2023 and 2024. Uh, instructional consultants for both of those years were all grant funded. Um, I am very proud to say that both our Assistant Superintendent for Special Education and our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction worked very hard on writing grants and finding grants. Uh, in addition, we used a lot of our COVID funding at that time to fund a lot of the instructional grants and all of our instructional consultants. Facilities, studies. So, uh, in the 2022, 2023 school year, we funded, um, one study that is through Colliers, which is $89,560. Out of one portion of that study has been completed, which is our 10-year capital improvement plan. So I'm not asking for $100,000 upfront. Um, it's broken out over 10 years. And it is our 10-year capital plan, which items later on in this budget are off of next year's suggested or recommended items off of the 10-year capital improvement plan. Uh, and then you can see our attorney fees. So I've broken those out, um, for the 22, 23 school year, it's $127,000. Uh, the following year, it's $135,000. Here to date, we have spent $100,000. Uh, and so, and we have in the budget for next year, $135,000. We do have some of the instructional consultants in there, but you'll see later on in the slide, I have since removed them. So they're removed later on. Question has come up, uh, on slide 17 about our instructional coaches and instructional leaders. How much money did the BOE spend on coaches, instructional, curriculum, other, prior to the close of the fiscal year? And how much is budgeted going forward? So currently, we have instructional coaches, our pre-K 8 buildings, we have six, we have four at the elementary level, two at the middle school level. At the 912, they're called instructional leaders. Um, you can see the cost for the six of $537,000. Uh, for the four at the high school, the 406. And then I broke it down for year after year. Um, and so right now, to add any additional coaches, they're currently in our strategic budget. We were looking to add for additional ones, but these are the costs for the current ones we have right now. Uh, slide 19 talks about our contingency account. So, um, how much money, how much of the BOE contingency has been used, um, over the past three years? So I listed out, uh, for you the contingency dollar amounts over the past three years. Typically, the amounts, and especially as I had said earlier, for this year, um, in 21, 22, it was $290,000, 22, 23, $499,000, 23, 24, $336. And in the current budget, in our current sustained budget, I have it listed as $617,000. And as I said earlier, primarily for the contract negotiations, athletic, um, trainers that are also going to be coming up.
Sorry. Um, just to clarify, the contingency account, we, we operate it differently, I think, than you, you guys do. I think you guys actually transfer money out of that account into other line items and spend it. We typically, um, just spend it out of the correct line item and let this offset. So if you look at last year's, where we ended up, we had about a $505,000 deficit in utilities. But we had $499,000, bless you, in, in, $499,000 in, in contingencies, essentially offset each other. So we, the board has chosen primarily not to transfer money out of there, but to, 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 you know, show where the accounts are. And then we have, you know, I guess they feel we have a better idea of what's, what needs to be adjusted when we create the new budget. So that wasn't like a, you know, we don't really spend it right out of that account.
Another piece of that was the surplus, so we made sure we included what the surplus was for the end of every year. Uh, currently, our current surplus is $397,000. And that can change. It's, we still have, you know, some months left to go, so, but that's currently where we are as of our April 15th, uh, operations meeting. Slide 21 shares, uh, how much money is currently in the 2% fund. These are typically things we use for one-time purchases. Um, so what we listed here, we just dropped them into buckets as to not go into detail for every single one. Uh, but our energy efficiency, currently, we have $201,000. Under equipment, which is typically our fences, our technology, assistive technology, intercoms, we have $264,000 that we've allocated to that project-based, meaning, uh, an indoor air quality study that we have to do, uh, bathroom conversion, digital records, changeover, it's $404,000. Uh, security, we have, uh, $224,000. We have $182,000 unallocated. And then in our special ed contingency, we have $647,000, which gives us the total of $1.9 million. You'll see slide 22 is just, um, a breakdown of the unencumbered fund balance. So it takes us now, which takes us now to slide 24. Which talks about, one of the next questions was, all of this, uh, what's the impact on our current budget? What portions of your proposed budget will have to be cut, given the mayor's response, that's in your opinion necessary? What portions of the proposed budget contain items not funded from prior years, if any? Which ones will require removal, given the mayor's response, that in your opinion are necessary? So what I did for this breakdown was to give you sort of an idea. I looked at, and sort of through some of my thinking as I worked through, how we would potentially work through handling this cut, this large cut for us. I looked at our strategic enhancement items, and I did list them later on in the slide for you to be able to see what they are, which total a hundred and four thousand dollars. So it's approximately a nine point five FTE, which is our full-time equivalent. And I just put the percentage of what would be unfunded for your review, which is twenty percent. I asked our departments, so that would be curriculum, special ed, technology, maintenance, the business department, to go back through their current sustained budgets and see what they can cut. And we came up with four hundred and sixty thousand dollars there. I asked our building administrators, many of which are here this evening, to go back and cut by ten percent to their budgets. So that came up with ninety thousand dollars. I typically only give them a student-allocated amount, so it's not a large sum of money that they're working with and then having to cut from. Then I looked at, okay, so now I'm left with still the two point five million dollars to meet what the mayor has recommended. And the only other thing, because we don't have a lot, and remember, the eighty percent is staff and health insurance, is a sixty-five point seven five full-time equivalent of staff. So when I provide you with that number, I want you to know that it's across multiple unions, multiple departments within our district. It's not one particular union, not one particular department. It's full-time staff, part-time staff. It's comprised of looking at the entire district and where can we look at things. At this point, I have only shared with union heads and administrators that particular number. I have not shared specifics, because I don't want to unnecessarily worry people if there are other options or things that, when we go back to the board and do our budget workshops after the final number is given, that we can then work through. So I'm just providing an overall general look, based on all of the things I've looked at for the past few weeks and sleepless evenings of how are we going to meet that request? I think it's a fair depiction of where we are right now. I did include for you, just for your reference, the items that make up that hundred and four thousand dollars in the strategic budget. So on slides twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine are items we requested in our strategic budget. It's a staff member full-time for the Center for Innovation and Design Director over at Fritz. Currently, we fund that through grant funding from our Besser. We requested for additional instructional coaches, speech and language assistant, full-time school psychologist, part-time social worker, an assistant to building and grounds. I move on to slide twenty-eight. We also listed two securely e-hall pass, which is security items for students as they're using the bathroom. They request a hall pass, for example, for both of our high schools, a full-time school nurse, additional school nurse at Lyman Hall, part-time health office assistant at Pond Hill, and stipend for our lead information technology technician, which all of that gives you eight hundred and four thousand dollars.
Thank you very mu-- oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were trying to go ahead.
No, that thing, I promise, the capital budget items. So if you look at slide thirty-one, we created this year through Colliers, the help of Colliers helped us to create a ten-year strategic capital item improvement plan. It's ten years long plus, actually, and it covers every single one of our schools. It looks at what are the needs of our schools, and it breaks it out over ten years. So it's every single school in the district. It does not include anything that has to do with one high school. It is every single building, a look at it from Mr. Deptula, who is the director of our building grounds, and our building administrators look at every single one of their buildings, and what do we need to keep these buildings open, safe for students, and running? So that's what that's comprised of. And so as of right now, the total cost, if you were to fund everything, would be a hundred and two million dollars. But we broke it up over years. They are movable, meaning if we don't get an item or it's not recommended for funding, we can move it out to the following year, which then means we move other items out. It's broken down by school, then it gives you a total dollar amount at the end. What I did for capital item requests was take a look at that ten-year strategic, that ten-year capital plan, and just look at what we're recommending for next year. So on there are, to replace the two boilers at Pond Hill. This year, one of the boilers does not work, it's broken. We had to rent one in order to make sure we got through the season of winter. One works, one does not. So that one had a rental. I know next year, it doesn't work. So our options are, we need, no, we need two new boilers there. We're gonna have to rent another one again, which is not as efficient. Lyman Hall boilers, there's three there that need to be replaced. These are boilers that, I can't even tell you how often we, our maintenance department and outside vendors are out there to fix them. It's a five AM call to all of our staff and myself to find out whether or not we're gonna have school, because can they get them up and running for the time the kids walk in the building? On here, we have playscape to replace at Moses White Beach, renovate the softball field at Lyman Hall, the ball field, baseball and softball at Dagg Hamishald Middle School, resurface and repaint the tennis courts at Lyman Hall, and also add Marti Sheen, and sidewalk repair at Marti Sheen High School. These capital items are two point seven million dollars, they come off that ten-year plan. They're not, they have not been recommended for funding, so then I will take these and move them on the plan, or some of them I may have to come back because the boilers probably will not make it. Highland is another one. They, since we've made this, they keep coming up. So the last page on thirty, slide thirty-three, is just again the overall, what our request was and where we are. Yes, yes, go ahead.
So I just want to speak to the boilers very quickly, because you might be thinking, why don't you just repair them? The parts are obsolete, so most of these boilers are from the nineteen fifty's timeframe, and we no longer can repair them. And we are really in jeopardy of more and more schools on this list. And so I just hope that you look at that with the same sort of gravity that we do, that our students do need heat in their schools, and we don't want to be missing educational days, which then speak to how the curriculum is going to be implemented, and of course, the thing that everyone loves to talk about, test scores, right? So it all is impacted. And we might just look at it and think it's just boilers, but it is so far beyond that. And so I just want to point that out, that what we're asking for is beyond repair, well beyond the use of its, or its useful life.
Thank you for a very thorough report. I think you answered most of my questions, and it looks like most of my colleagues as well. I had a question, you know, when I first saw your proposed budget and I saw the six and a half percent increase, I was a little sticker-shocked. But I was curious, how does that compare to other schools of similar size, you know, other districts in our DURG? Is this commonplace, or are we standing out of the pack here?
It's a great question. So part of my superintendent group is, we typically, especially for our DURG, everyone kind of shares information and wants to know where everyone's coming in and where they are funded. Typically for us, so if you look at where we are, and we compare them to some of the others in our DURG, around our size, Newington was at a seven point nine nine request, increased request, Southington was at eight point three five, Weathersfield is at seven point seven three percent, another one, Watertown, five point five three percent, North Haven, it's smaller than us, but they're at seven point three seven percentage increase, Milford is at four point seven. So we're kind of right around, Berlin, where I live, is at six point three eight percent. So everyone is right around the same, give or take a little bit, depending on what their setup is for their buildings.
Thank you. You know, it's tough to look at these numbers and to hear this proposal and the ramifications of these cuts. You know, you talk about a sustained service budget, which is just that, it's just sustaining what we currently have. And to maintain that level and quality of education that's being provided to our students right now. So I think, as a community, we need to decide what is important to us, what our top priorities are, whether education is one of them. And I hope it is, and I think all of us here want to see our school systems successful. But I don't think we're gonna see the success we want to see if we cannot even maintain the status quo, the level of resources and services that our schools are currently providing. And I think the cut the Board of Ed is facing is substantial, there's no question in that. And I think we should really talk about restoring some funding to their proposed budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Allenson?
Just for information, were all of these capital items cut from your budget too?
No, we don't, I guess we provide them separately when we provide them. So we provide our operating budget, which is our sustained and our strategic, and then we provide another list of capital-type items that we would like funded. So I think it's a different presentation than some of the other departments.
Right, and none of them were funded at this time. So typically in the past, it would be, this is your overall increase percentage to the budget, and I'm recommending, like, for example, last year, it was, I'm recommending the Marti Sheen Track and Turf to be a capital item that's funded. And so that's how that then came through, and also the Dagg Elevator. And so that's why we came back for the Dagg Elevator. So of these, none of these were added to any of that, in addition to the three percent increase.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Councillor Pittman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the health insurance benefit issue is interesting. It's a fifteen million dollar expenditure. And it's a twenty-two percent increase?
It's twenty-two percent of the proposed increase of our number. It was, the increase on the allocation rates, we pay allocation rates because we're self-insured instead of a premium, it's called an allocation rate, but that went up fourteen percent.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah, so it was fourteen percent increase, but, you know, the reason it didn't, it wasn't a fourteen percent increase straight across is because we have movement in there. You know, some people have dropped the insurance, or somebody goes from family to, you know, to single, so it's less expensive. So that's why it doesn't tie exactly to the allocation rate.
So, you know, you guys have the ability to try and cut costs. Is that something that you've talked about or wanted to, like, go out to bid or something like that?
So we're done, we're in collaboration with the town, so we'd have to do that together with the mayor and all of the other town departments, excluding the fire department. So we did discuss that, and at one of our meetings, one of the last meetings that we had together, and it was mentioned that it would be more expensive if we did that as opposed to staying self.
More expensive for the board or more expensive for the town?
Probably for both, because you'd have, you'd spread the risk over less, you know, less people.
Well, I thought, like, the state plan, is that available to the municipalities?
It, I believe it is.
Okay. So, I mean, I think that's a lot better than the plan that we have, so I'm just trying to--
We don't know what the cost is, though. We have to, we have to see the cost.
Mr. Chairman? As part of our insurance analysis this year, we did ask our consultant to look at the state plan, and the overall cost would increase, I believe it was another four percent above what we already were facing in moving over to the state plan. Part of it would be, we'd have to carry, I want to say, two point seven million dollars in carryover costs to cover outstanding obligations from the prior year's claim. We might not, we might see savings, well, if the plan were not to experience increases in cost, we might see savings by year three. But to go there for the coming budget year actually presented a further increase in the townwide insurance costs.
And is it possible to get, so an analysis was done, a report issued, can we get a copy of that?
Sure.
And I guess, Mayor, while we're talking, you know, to my knowledge, like, Public Works, their insurance for their employees is in a general line, as is fire, police, and that kind of stuff, right?
With the exception of fire in--
Yeah.
--the town budget, we, it's our insurance cost, it's not broken out by town department for general government.
So why have you consider, I mean, the minimum budget requirement, the MBR, becomes a problem, we're dealing with the Board of Education, I mean, I certainly recognize that, and just so that everybody knows, you know, by state statute, you can't reduce, once you peg a number for a particular year for a budget for the Board of Education, you can't cut it. And we've tried to get that dealt with, but, I mean, fifteen million dollars is a lot of money to saddle a department, in my opinion, you know, compared to the other departments. Is there a reason why, is it philosophically, that we saddle that one department with that expense?
Historically, that's the way it's been done. We could attempt to reallocate it, but it gets paid, it gets paid no matter where you put it, at the end of the experience, the, it factors into the budget entirely.
Yeah, no, I totally understand, but, I mean, I'm looking at, you know, some of the stuff that's getting cut here. So I guess, once again, Mayor, you've proposed a cut of approximately, it was almost four million dollars. And I'm just trying to figure out, so I think it's three million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand two seventy-four. When you looked at their budget, were there particular items that you were looking to cut? I understand that it's sort of like a block grant, you know, they spend the money how they want, but how did you come up with four million?
It was based on looking at the entire town's budget, is the way I came up with the cut, to attempt to factor in a reasonable increase. We were looking at a tax increase no matter what, and it was my attempt to mitigate the tax increase.
But on the general side of government, if we say, you know, if they say this is a sustained services budget, this is what we need to keep constant, and general government saying this is what we need to be constant, is it fair to say that on the Board of Education's side, there was a cut, but on the general government's side, there was an increase?
I'm, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable agreeing to that statement at this point.
Well, I just, when you said you're looking at the entirety of the budget, this, this cut of four million dollars, is there a similar cut that you can identify in the general government's side?
I can tell you that every department on general government experienced some reduction in requests.
And I know, you know, new administration, that that issue had always been a problem, at least with me in the past, and I've tried to probe that from time to time. Is there an ability, I've never seen a document from the administration that indicates this is what the department asked for, like, actually asked for. I mean, I understand the lines in the budget usually match up, but--
I mean, police and fire, their entire request is included in your budget book. Just about every department's entire request is included in your budget book.
Yeah.
And, and those are broken out into line items, and what you see in column four is what is recommended for funding. I think it's four, whatever the last column is, my apologies.
Yeah, no, I understand, the approved column or the recommended column from the-- Yeah, no, I understand, the approved column or the recommended column from the administration. I'm just trying to, you know, in my mind's eye, I can't think of a, a large entry on the general government's side where there was a request and then that you changed it in your column. That's all I'm looking for. You said that there were changes or things that departments didn't get on the general government's side. Is there anything reflected in the budget like that?
Forgive me, I'm not understanding your question.
Okay.
I'm not trying to be obtuse.
No, that's fine. There's two columns at the end of the budget pages. One is what the department requested, one is what the mayor approved, right? And the last one's blank because it's council approval and that we're not there yet, right?
Right.
My review of the budget, the column that department request and mayor approved, I think in every instance was the same.
I'm not looking at it right now, but I don't know, as I sit here.
Okay, I'm just looking for $4 million or something like that that was cut from general government on those lines, so, so we can compare apples to apples. But going to the Board of Ed...
Oh, yeah, no, the, the overall general government cut was 3.13 million? Am I reading you, 3.1, 3.3 million?
Some of that stuff was shifted to the ARPA?
Yes, some stuff was shifted for other funding.
Yeah, okay. So when I look at the proposed cuts, which I know is always very difficult, because you don't know where we're going to end up on May 12th, right? But I appreciate the snapshot, this is what it would, would be, right? One of the things that I hear is that we're top-heavy on administration. But I, I don't see on page 24 any reduction in administration.
So I did not identify where I cut it from on 65.75. And so I left it that way because I looked at taking a little bit from everywhere. And so I am not yet at the point to let everyone know that and, and specific unions, positions, how many at that point.
Understood, because then it's like demoralizing.
Correct, and, you know, in my mind, and I'm just, you know, I think everybody knows that it's coming. I've shared that, that 3.9, it's going to impact staff. It's, it's a very large cut for us, and so it's inevitable that it's staff. The way I try and do things is I look at, obviously, students first, student-facing, what's mandated by, what programming is mandated by the state and what is not. I, I don't really feel like we're top-heavy in administrators when I think about neighboring towns and, and how many administrators they have with maybe not as many students as we have. But I, I respect people's opinions, but I have looked at, overall, every single department, union, non-union, all of it, to come up with this number.
No, I appreciate, I, I should have thought of that.
Yeah, it's okay.
The crossing guard situation, how did that come to be that it ended up in your budget after all these years?
I don't know. I was told that the crossing guards are going to become part of our budget at $188,000. There's nine posts, it's outside of all of our schools or very close to our schools. It's for our students and our families as they cross the students back and forth. There is a piece of it that will still have to be maintained and overseen by the police department because if a crossing guard calls out sick, we cannot, I cannot provide subs for that. So then it's the police department that has to provide a police officer to cover that. Training for, in my understanding, is any training for the crossing guards that has to happen, has to happen on that end, because I'm not skilled in that department. Others I can learn, but I don't think that's my, my thing. I can learn.
So the insurance situation and being in your budget, have you, I mean, the Board of Education is involved with a lot of statewide groups, CAPE, for instance. Have you, like, inquired of your colleagues how other towns handle that particular line item?
So I haven't specifically on that, because typically we do it collaboratively with the town. I do know in speaking with our consultants this time around and knowing that we have five contracts, that there are things that we can potentially look at, to potentially consider and, and propose at negotiations that may bring things down a little bit. But I think for a lot of my colleagues, we're all in the same place.
I'm more focused on whether or not in those particular towns, in the majority of the towns, does the Board of Education use against them their health insurance costs? And I don't mean that in a pejorative, I mean, is it part of their budget as opposed to general government?
I'd have to, it's, it's a, yeah, I would agree. It is mixed, it depends.
So I can tell you that being on the CAPE chairperson phone calls once a month, budget is obviously the hot topic. And it's no, if you watch the news, every district is suffering, and I would say it's very mixed. Some municipalities are in the same situation that we are, and then in other areas of the state, insurance is not part of the budget. And so I don't think there's one blanket scenario that you would see across the state.
Let me ask you this, is there a hybrid? So is there certain bargaining units that it is taken on by general government? Because the concern is the MBR. And if you take $15 million, right, and you say, okay, we're shifting $15 million to an obligation of general government, that's going to hold about $15 million on your side, but for your sustained budget, you're at like four, so that's quite a windfall, right? Right? So, you know, if you took like just administrators and put that, you know, is any town doing it like that?
I, I personally have not heard of any town doing a hybrid, but I welcome looking at that idea.
Go ahead. On my list serves, I can ask my colleagues, so I can look out the different DURGs, and I can also, our superintendent group for Southern Connecticut, I can also ask them and get some information.
Because I can understand, like, the prior administration keeping the number, but, you know, as the health insurance increases, it sort of like tamps you down from being able to do stuff. So, well, I very much appreciate the conversation on this one and the next one. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor?
Thank you. So as a practical matter, the premium copayment that the employee pays comes out of their payroll. So that kind of mitigates in favor of the insurance expense being part of the education budget, just operationally.
Councilor Haddon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Thank you for answering my questions. There's one, I think, I may have missed it, but, yeah, I don't know if you know the answer off the top of your head, but one of the questions I didn't see the answer to was, I had asked if the Board of Ed used the $290,000 that the council gave back, or in other words, we restored from the mayor's budget last year with our budget amendments, was that $290,000 spent on what we had earmarked or requested that it be spent on? And if not, where did that money end up? And so the three, the three places we had requested it go to, towards were the Pond Hill Elementary School Gymnasium floor for $130,000, the DAG ball field for $80,000, and the DAG replaced the back gym floor for $80,000.
Great, sorry, I didn't want to mention it.
No, you skipped all the other ones.
We did not, we did get that money back, you're correct. And we operate, we put that in the operating budget. So we use that money instead of the fields here to save positions. So that's where we put the money back, because last year we looked at a $3.2 million reduction. And so we took that $290,000 and put it back to save positions within the district.
Okay, I just, I just think it's important to note, because I, I mean, I, just for the public's benefit, we, the Board of Ed is the one department, we can't make a line item. We can't say this is what, you will spend it on. So basically, you say this is what we think we're going to spend it on, we give the dollar amount, and then you could really spend it on whatever you choose to spend it on. We had, we did restore that funding, requested it go to those items. Disappointing to hear that it didn't, but I obviously understand if you used it for, for something you thought was, was a priority. But I think we just want to make sure we are aware of that this year, that if we do make a request that we want it to go to a certain thing, it may not necessarily go to that. Another thing I just want to clarify, I, this is my, my biggest pet peeve, not in regards to just Board of Ed, but budget time in general, the word cuts. So the mayor did not cut the Board of Ed. The mayor cannot cut the Board of Ed, I believe, per state statute, as we were discussing before. The mayor gave, is proposing to give the Board of Ed $3.4 million above what is in the current budget. So obviously, it's a reduction to what the Board of Ed requested. But I just want to make it very clear that, for, just for the public's benefit, we're not, we did not cut, the mayor's not proposing to cut the Board of Ed. The mayor actually gave a 3% increase, which is $3.4 million. That being said, I had a question about, and I didn't submit this, I just came up, I was thinking now. Were any of, so I know the Board of Ed received ARPA money, and you had to use it for more specific things than what general government could use it for. Were there any positions that were funded with that, that now that the money's run out, you're looking to fund, are those in the strategic plan, basically?
So many of the positions, so we did a couple of things. So when we look at all the grant funding that we received, ARPA funding, we knew right from the beginning that after so many, we were, it wasn't going to continue forever. So we knew the needs of our students at that time, you know, mental health, well-being of our students and our staff, top priority. Learning acceleration and providing, you know, ways to provide other opportunities for our students, also a top priority. So through a lot, looking through a lot of that, and at that time, it was also family and community outreach services and things. So as we looked at it, we provided a lot in the beginning. As the years went on, we made sure to sort of scaffold that off, because we knew we weren't going to be able to maintain that high level. So to your, to your current question, we did fund in the current budget, we put in the sustained, two, actually, three positions that we currently were funding through the grants. Other positions were put into the strategic requests that we have. So the way we look at it is, you know, three positions, we definitely want in the sustained. Other positions are the strategic quests, requests. So depending on what we get in terms of funding, then we make those determinations from there.
Okay, great, thank you. Another thing I just wanted to bring up, we talked about the $100 million capital plan over 10 years, and I just want to make it clear, because I know we discussed this with each other, that is not part of, of the budget per se, that's, that's an addition. But some of those items are in your budget for that first year, correct? The first of the 10 years?
Correct, they're not part of the overall ask of 6. something percent. So they're not part of the sustained, they're not part of the strategic. Typically, we've always kept those separate. So those are items that we provide off of that list to say these are things that we know as capital items in addition to the overall ask or increase that need to be funded. And so typically, those are hard decisions for us, because where we are right now on this 10-year plan, there's a lot of things that need to be funded, and they change daily sometimes. But that's how we've kind of looked at it. And I think with the help of colleagues, we were able to take all of our current strategic plans and really lay it out and kind of do the best we could. And it's movable, it doesn't mean it has to stay where it is, but to points that were made earlier, to kind of try to start to map out, what is this going to look like every year? Because we're going to have asks every year, because there's so much right now at this point that's going. Everything is around the same age, 1958, 1968. Our team does a great job replacing and repairing, but at some point, the parts aren't available. And so we're trying to get a little bit ahead and plan a little bit ahead, but they're all so costly, and we understand that as well.
No, it makes sense. I just, Mr. Sun, this, this may be for you, just administratively. So would, would those items be more, those would be bonding items that would be separate from the Board of Ed budget? Is that how that would work? If the administration said, you know, we're going to spend, I don't know, $4 million this year of the, of the $100 million?
Yes, the, the big items.
Okay.
Not the $20,000 on sidewalks.
Right.
The boilers, yes.
Okay, so we can address those items separate from the Board of Ed budget?
And the mayor did state earlier that he omitted in the letter, you know, we were planning on trying to come up with a phase five, take care of some of that stuff. There'll be discussions on bonding some of that stuff.
Okay, all right, so I just want to make it clear, we can still address capital issues that come up a lot, aside from this, in the coming months? Okay, okay, perfect. The only other thing I want to say, I mean, you know, obviously a lot for everyone to think about. This was helpful. My, the thing that bothers me is when I look at, so there's a page in the budget book which shows the salaries, and I assume this is not including benefits. Well, there's no number, but it's, it's the 2024, 25 BOE employee wage rates. I don't think it's in your budget, I think it's in our, it looks, it looks like this, just a listing of all the... These are, so these do not include benefits. Mr. Sun, is that, do you know that?
They do not.
They do not, okay. All right, thank you. So, you know, what, what bothers me when we talk about, you know, potential layoffs, you know, you look at like the teacher salaries, and obviously, the teachers are, you know, the ones in the classroom are the ones that we, you know, you worry about. The biggest bulk of our teachers, 280 teachers, are at $106,674 pre-benefits. You know, teachers at the, it looks like the lowest-paid teacher is at $57,365. So that's a teacher with a bachelor's. You know, with a master's, it goes up a little bit, you know, not much, and then, you know, with a six-year degree. But I'm assuming this is all based on longevity and step increases.
All contractual basis.
Contractual increases. So my concern is that if we talk about, you know, layoffs or, you know, I, I assume we'd be hitting the lowest-paid teachers first, because contractually, it would go by seniority, correct?
Eventually, yes. So it depend, so it depends on union contracts, it depends on positions, it does depend on seniority. And then teachers that, just because you're using teachers, so I'm just going to use this as an example. If a teacher is, if a position is eliminated, or they have a large number of seniority, we look at the seniority of, I have to cut one particular teacher at one particular building. So then we look at the list of seniority for that grade level per se, or however that works. They go on what we call, and it's all part of the contract, a reduction enforced list. So that teacher who may have, I'm making this up, 10 years of seniority, then bumps a teacher that has least, the least amount of seniority. So eventually, the teachers, to your point, that have the least amount of seniority are the ones that may or may not have a job or have to get bumped from the list. So that's how that works. It's all part of the teacher's contract language that we have to follow. Each contract has its own set of seniority rules. I only picked the teachers just because you were asking about it, and that's just a very broad, basic kind of, it's a little more intricate than that, but just to give you an overview. But each contract has its own rules that go with that.
Yeah, it's just, you know, it's hard to think about that, you know, when I saw this list, I saw that the vast majority of our teachers are in that, 280 teachers are at the $106,000 range. And, you know, I'm thinking about this, and I'm thinking that's, you know, it's the poor, it's the, you know, the ones, you know, I'm thinking are freshly on the job, right out of college for a couple of years that are, you know, probably would be affected by this, and the ones making $106,000 are, I'm assuming, you know, probably fairly safe. You know, nothing, nothing we can do about it, it's contractual, but, you know, just a little difficult to think about, but, um, thank you for, for
Welcome.
for answering all the questions, helps a lot. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, thank you, and, and some of my questions were answered as well in here, and I appreciate that. I, I just wanted to kind of brass tacks, just so, you know, and maybe wake some folks up here. So basically, if I'm understanding this correctly, you've got about 80% of the increase that is sort of given, correct? So if, if we just look at wages and health insurance benefits, that's 80% of the increase from last year to this year. So if we cut what you request in half, that's going to come out of this 80%, no matter how you look at it, cut it, dissect it, try to figure out a way to renegotiate our benefits. That's happening, correct? Okay.
Correct.
The second piece then would be that, according, if we just go with what is, and you're forced to then do what you have to do, it's my understanding, and again, if I'm off-base here, that you would be looking at, in addition to reducing the budget by $640,000, you're also going to have to remove approximately 76 FTE from our schools. Is that?
Correct, so the strategic ones, there are, they are strategic, so they're not Correct. So the strategic ones, they are strategic, so they're not in the budget yet, they're not in the sustained budget.
Right, right, but, but just so, if we're looking on the same, so on page 24, 100% of the cut, about 86, 87% would be, 86% would be people.
Correct.
Right, okay, and so then, the demographics are really helpful, I appreciate that. So pre-pandemic, it looks like everything's gone up, including the number of students we have on special ed, the number of kids with a 504 plan, the number of kids who get a free reduced lunch. So in the process of us trying to reduce staff to overcome a budget, we're also seeing an increase in need, both in terms of kids who don't have enough money to eat lunch, kids who need additional help, as well as kids who are different learners in the classroom.
Correct. You are absolutely correct.
Okay, so I, I'm sort of in line with Counselor Carmody in trying to figure out a way to restore some of the money to this budget, because I think it's important. You know, when we talk about other things, and then again, and then, and then on top of all that, on top of all that, you've got all these extra pages of tennis courts and all these things that's not even in here that are things, and I, and I recognize that we could try to do that with bonding and so forth, but I just find the whole thing sort of alarming. And that's why those, the questions I asked were specifically, what can't you cut? And so the answer is, basically, you can't cut anything. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me first say, let not my attire indicate a lack of a sense of bias. But that's it for the humor on this item. We, we, we should always keep in mind that, just as the mayor, historically and even currently, may go through the board budget and, you know, make adjustments to that budget. And I think just simply so it makes sense on paper, there are reductions by line item, he's fully aware and we're all fully aware that the only thing that matters is the bottom-line number. And that is all we have the authority to, to act upon. And while it's certainly important and useful and helpful for us to go through this exercise of talking about, you know, where's your head on all this? Where's this all going? It is not our role to look at line items in your budget and say, well, can you cut this, can you cut that, can you do this? There's, because, because there's a group of people that, whose job that is, and it's the Board of Education. They do that. We can think about it, but it's futile. On the, and I'm sorry, on the issue of the insurance, I mean, I understand the thoughts, well, no, I don't, but I can understand the sentiments behind questioning it, whose budget it is in, but it, it's still going to be tax dollars. Doesn't matter whose budget it's in. So if we take $50 million out of your budget and say, hey, board, you have everything you want, we're still going to have to put it in the town budget, it's the same tax dollars. So that's another exercise in futility. I have to ask your indulgence in explaining something to me, please. I feel like Columbo. The, the information you gave us this evening, this explains your proposed budget. But in here, are there, are the numbers at some point shown? Do they reflect what would be lost based on the mayor's budget? In other words, I, I believe, I read it that way, then I got confused, and so on, but...
So take a look at Slide 24.
Thank you, that's
You're welcome.
Yeah.
So these are just, in my attempt, again, to look at how we would get to that, just to provide, because we were asked some
Got it.
kind of thought process behind it.
Understandable.
Not discussed yet with the board, not finalized with the board, not finalized through any kind of process yet, or workshop process that we typically go through once we have our final number.
And, and I appreciate that, and that's what I thought, you're saying, and I know how it works. Once your budget is finalized, you, you guys all, you get in, you get in your little room and you say, okay, now what? And this was your attempt to give us an idea of, more than likely, this is the type of glaring impact we'll probably see. And as Counselor Reynolds so adequately presented it, you don't have a lot of choices. It's primarily going to be personnel.
Correct, and I think my, my goal with this was just to really highlight that, for you to look at it different ways and just say, I'm sort of stuck in a lot of the contractual obligations.
Right, so you highlighted about $4 million, for example, of roughly seven, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we've got a, we have to wrangle with that. When I was talking earlier about capital expenses, and I do, I appreciate the mayor's response to that, and that's encouraging, and I really appreciate that. And I'm not surprised by it. But when we look at, so when we look at the budget capital items, now that was, on page 31, that was an explanation of capital items that were in your budget, correct?
No.
No, they're not in the budget, they're separate.
That's where I need the help.
Correct. They are separate than my sustained, strategic, and overall request. They're in addition, so we've always historically done it that way. Given us sustained, a strategic, which gives us the overall request. And then we've also asked about looking at, are any of these capital items, can the mayor recommend for funding or approval for funding?
All right, so if we write in like heroes and say, we're going to cover $2.7 million in capital expenses, instead of using the money the way the mayor was going to use it tonight, that's not even coming out of the seven?
Correct. The capital items, I guess you could say, are in addition to the seven.
All right, well.
It's a lot.
Took that air out of my balloon, okay. That's good to know, though. All right, man, we need to understand that I have no, I'm not going to talk about line items, and that's your job. We're faced with, basically, let me put it this way, we go back to page 24. You say, okay, so you showed us how you figure roughly $4 million would probably be reflected.
Correct.
What about the other three?
So the other three is going to go to continue our sustain, so it's going to continue to run what we have. Because in order to get to our sustained overall, right? Our, our overall, just the sustained increase, I would need, looking at this,
Yes.
right, we're not needing that overall sustain.
Right.
So I am, was given $3.4 million, which is a lot, but it still leaves me with a deficit of $3.1 million to cover the sustained piece. If you took out the strategic items for a moment,
Yeah.
right, I still would need $3.1 million to maintain a sustained budget of staff.
Okay.
As is.
That's probably where I was, without knowing it, was trying to get to.
Correct. So if you take a look at Slide 3, go to the, the beginning, right?
Yes.
My increase is, just for sustained alone, $6.5 million.
Got it.
I was given $3.4, I'm just going round numbers, $3.4.
Got it.
I need the different, in order to keep everything and not cut staff, let's just say, it takes strategic out of it for a moment, it would be 3.1, approximately, $3 million, $3.1 million.
Okay. It helps tremendously.
Okay.
Yes, thank you very much. You know, we're, I can't speak for anyone else, other than a couple I might have spoken to briefly about this, but, you know, we're going through this, okay, can we do anything? What can we do? And how much do we have to do? And I don't want to ever put you in a position to say, well, if you give us this much back, we'll be happy, because that's not your job either. Your job is to present what you feel you need for our system to flourish. And that's not necessarily being sustained.
Correct, it would be combination of both.
Right, but we then say, all right, but if we can't, you know, and I will never want to use wish list wants, needs, I hate those words, but if we were to say, this is a tough year, as comes up so often, that all of the enhancements, all of the increases, the strategic stuff, I don't see how we're going to do it, but we don't want you to go backwards. We don't want to see that. That would be the money you're talking about to keep you at sustained. And I understand that, and we're talking roughly $3 million something plus. That, that helps me with what I need to think about. And I appreciate that, thank you very much, I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allison.
So I said this at the last budget, and I'll say it again. I have a strong disagreement with the idea that we, as a town, improve, we approve increases for people via contract, and we have no control over insurance, and then when budget comes around, we kind of abandon that. From my perspective, I completely understand where we are, as far as, you know, nobody wants a huge tax increase. This would be a larger tax increase than we historically have had in Wallingford, if we were to restore this 100% with everything else that's in the budget. I would also argue, though, that we are playing catch-up for years and years and years of not doing some of these things. And this is not to say that the person running the, the place wasn't dedicated to this town, because I think it was due to an adamant dedication to keeping taxes low, that we are in the situation that we are in, but now we're in it. And we acknowledge that we need help in many areas of this town. And we now can't sustain services for education in addition to doing all the other things that we need to do as a town. And this cannot be an easy role for any of, it's certainly not an easy role for me, because I've had things thrown at me over a $20 tax increase. I can only imagine what's going to happen this year, but my my thoughts on this matter are that we have to, we have to restore some of this budget. I, I completely understand, and this is not to say that anything was done wrong in this process. I think that we're kind of doing the best we can with the bag that was handed to us. And now, we as a council are going to have to decide, are we going to be the people who vote to increase taxes by essentially a historic amount? And I'm just dropping it out there, because that's what this means. And I, I for one, am, I, I understand what the cost of doing business is in this town and for education. We cannot continue to give people, people raises and continue to insure them as an employer, and then punish them when budget season comes around by threatening them with unemployment and uncertainty. That goes for every department, not just Board of Education. People need to take a good, hard look, a lot of us work in corporate environments. I have been through in 15 years of corporate work structure. I don't work for a corporation now, I work for a family-owned company, but it runs very much like one. I've gone through five reorgs since I've been there in four years, and I've gone through about 30 in 15 years. The uncertainty that comes with a reorganization is like being held hostage, because you have worked for, you've worked for what you've gotten so far, and you have struggled and probably cried, and probably laughed, and done, run through the gamut of emotions that comes with working full-time and managing a household and managing a family and doing all of the other things we do. I don't have a family, so I do this. I appreciate what everyone in this room has been sending to us over the past weeks. I appreciate what the mayor is trying to do for the town by not making a huge tax increase. And now we, as a council, have to really look at, what do we want to do? Because I think we need it both ways, personally. And I know this isn't like a motions meeting or anything like that, but I don't want to continue to put our town employees and our teachers and our administrators in a position where they feel like they are in a constant state of uproar because they don't know what's happening next year, simply because they got a raise or their insurance costs too much this year. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Reagan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the public's justification, the governor, the state's elected officials has significantly cut certain reimbursement rates, for instance, from 88% to 72% for the next fiscal year. Can you expand on that a bit and quantify the dollar amount that was associated with that reduction?
That, that particular one sounds like the excess cost grant, reimbursement grant. I think that costs us a little, probably $320,000 this year in reimbursement money.
Were there any other reimbursement rates that were cut by the state in other categories?
I'm sure there were none that, you know, I'm aware of right now, but I believe, well, I would say that I think that excess cost next year is actually going to be down to 67%. Because I just saw an email yesterday or today, that it's, it's, it's down to 70. It was, it was around 70.46. And now they're saying next year will be 67, and there's, they're saying there's no, they're not going to adjust it. You know, there's not going to be money to bring it back to where it was supposed to be. So that's a significant amount for us, I mean, you know, that's probably another 30, 40 grand that we, that offsets our tuition, that basically offsets our tuition costs. And, you know, that's money we count on, so when we, we budget our tuition, we budget it net of that. So, you know, if we think it's going to be $7 million in tuitions and we're getting $2 million back, it's a $5,000, a $5 million budget item. That's, that's one of our, the biggest ones that we're seeing right now. But I, you know, I mean, some of the other grants that we rely on, that we get, not, not the COVID-type grants, but the ones we get every year, or every other year, those may be reduced also, we just, I just don't have any information on that, that, you know, that they are getting reduced at this point.
Great, thank you.
So, you know, the thing that's difficult for me is, based on your representation, and I assume that it's 100% accurate, we're going to be in the same boat next year, because it seems like there's a, unless you, you know, you have some reason to believe we won't.
No, I, I, I understand where you're coming from.
So it seems like, you know, it's 7% this year, and then it'll be 7% next year. I'm just not, you know, like, you, you can't run the business 7% plus every year, right? We're not in university, so we, like, the money's got to come from somewhere. So there has to be an endpoint, and, you know, I have kids in school, so it's not like, you know, I, I certainly appreciate, and I was on the Board of Ed, I appreciate the gravity of what you're going through. My thought is, and I don't mean this to sound harsh, but like, do we rip off the Band-Aid now and make the adjustments now, and then put us in a better position for the future? Or do we get the money this year and then face the same discussion again next year, and then we're looking at the same 63 positions next year? So, you know, we can't tell you how to spend your money, right? 100% can't. But, you know, you still see some things, like some of the But, you know, you still see some things, like some of the curriculum coordinators and some of those positions. And, you know, like, when I was on the Board, we, we had those, when I was on the Board of Ed a long time ago, sort of, you know, related to Common Core, and you're kind of like, why are we still doing these things, you know? So, I don't know, and not to, to call out anything in particular, it's just the first thing that came to mind, you know, in regard to stuff that I kind of thought we wouldn't have, you know, in 2024. So, I guess that's where I am with it, I'm, I'm, this is, it's a struggle. So on to Mr. Testa.
I'll make it quick, I forgot one thing. Is, and I think I know the answer. Of the, of the, and I'll just use round numbers. Of that $3 million you're short of your sustained budget, is there anything that would be considered one-time expense that we could potentially pay for with other funds? Or is that not even allowed? Because that's why the capital money is outside.
Right, those are, those are sustained salary, you know, most of it is salary stuff.
That's what I figured.
Contractual and insurance, so.
And that's, that's why I wanted the clarification. When you're talking about the, the repairs, the upgrades, this and that, that's a separate box altogether.
Correct, so some of those items, like if you look at this, I think I understand where you're going. If you look at this, and this may not help or answer what you're thinking, but when you look at this 10-year plan, some of these things that are on here are capital items that can be, some can be bonded, some are not, some things we do in-house. So when you ask about the 2% fund, for example, a lot of those items that are on there are smaller items that our staff in-house might be handling. Or, so there's, you know, we try to come up, we try to look at everything that's on that list as how can we address all of these items? Not all of them will come here for capital requests or capital improvements. Some are the things we can handle in-house that are one-time purchases that may come out of our 2%. So we try and do the best we can with what we have, and, and how do we spread that out? But for this particular thing, most of it's sustained.
These are all ongoing operating expenses, they're not, none of, none of that money is, is one-time.
Right.
Okay, that, that clarifies.
The way I'm looking at it.
I understand, thank you very much.
Minimal, but not to that point.
I got you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Leffin.
Thank you. Thanks, hi. So, to kind of put things in perspective, why, we're all up here, we've been talking for how long about this? And we're gonna hear all about it again on Monday, and then probably again in another meeting or two. Why, why the struggle if it's so easy, right? So typically, historically, the Board of Education's budget is anywhere from 60% to 60% of the entire town's budget. And people would come to me like, "Oh, why can't you, you know, you gotta cut taxes." I'm like, "Well, then we gotta cut from the Board of Ed because you can't just pull from one pool." And in a similar, largest bucket fashion, your, your bucket, the same way that the town's is the Board of Ed, your bucket is people, their positions. And, but I think, and I, and that does not go lightly by me or us, I would say, probably everybody up here. But, but the matter of perspective and why we're all kind of like struggling on this, why we're taking so long, everybody's kind of hoping for that one miracle we haven't thought of yet, is that the typical tax increase over the past 10 years, whatever year to year, was about $100 on the average household. This year, it's over $200 on the average household. And I asked for these numbers from the Controller earlier this week. To fully fund the Board of Education, it would be another $166 for a total of $369 on the average household. So I think that is where the struggle is. We all want, we want all those things. But when you, when you look at how the town has been, what the town's used to, what the town, the town would get upset over the $100. I mean, that got knocked down to zero, one year it was 50 bucks, another year. So just from here to full request, it's $166 on the average household. And this also includes the greatest reliance on the general fund that we've seen coming from the mayor's office in budgeting as well. So we have a couple weeks to play with it and figure it out, and, so I, and I think that's, that's more for, you know, everybody, for, not just you guys, you already know, but like people at home, in the audience, and all the emails. I hope, I think I responded to everybody, if I didn't, it wasn't on purpose. It's a, it's a big, it's a big deal to figure out. So, it's, I don't have the answers right now. I mean, you could see, I didn't mean to be rude, I know there's like sidebar conversations, but everybody's kicking around ideas and we're on our phone calculators and stuff, trying to just keep getting our head around everything, so.
And I appreciate that.
Thank you for all that you've done. And I, I know it's not easy, when I was on the Board, I always looked at it as, we would tell the town council, the mayor, "This is what we can do for this amount of money." And then he, they'd say, "Well, you're gonna get this amount instead." And then we'd go back and figure it out. But I, I do, I do recognize, and I wanted to give you credit, that this, this is a disparity that seems daunting.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishbein.
I guess you gotta ask yourself, are you happy where you are? You know, a sustained budget keeps you where you are. The other day, we did a collection in Hartford for the Detention Center. The kids that are 14 to 18 years old that end up being detained, we were collecting books. And I explained, you know, they, they had asked, you know, what grade level should the books be for? Well, the kids are 14 to 18. I said, "No, these kids can't read at 14 to 18." They end up in this situation many times because they're reading at like 11 age. So, you know, I think we really gotta look at this, and I'm concerned. I had another point, I forgot what it is, but I don't know where we go from here at this time. You know, I'm looking at the budget, $4 million is, is a lot of money. And it's important that people come to this town because they want their kids to not be those kids in the juvenile detention center, quite frankly. I don't know that we're there. I, I, I don't know that today, that people are coming to our town as they did 20 years ago because of our great education. I, I don't, I don't say that with any, I very much appreciate what our Board of Education does. But you are given children and you are given certain tools to take those kids and make them productive people in our society. So, I don't know what I'm doing with this, and I'm not gonna telegraph, and I'm not sitting down with anybody to talk about the budget. Because I see the numbers, and I see the problems. We've got a lot to talk about over the next few weeks, so. May 12th is coming fast, and I do, I do now remember, Mr. Brown, you mentioned about less reimbursement in the next budget. I'll tell you, and I don't know if it's been in the news, but we're not gonna have a budget in Hartford this year. So, the budget that was booked last year will be the budget. So, I, you know, maybe that's of some assurances to you that you can plan accordingly. But that's the word around the house, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, any other questions from the council? Okay, then we'll move on to the next item, don't go anywhere because you're involved in the next one too.
Well, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session. First, we enter section 1-206D of the Connecticut General Statute, Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale, and/or leasing of property.
We're going into executive session, but the Board of Ed members are welcome to stay.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, pardon my interruption. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Objections, abstentions? We are now in executive session.
So moved.
Motion is made in second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions? We are now in regular session. Okay, item 11 has been withdrawn, which leaves us only with item 13. So item 13 was on the schedule for the budget motions meeting. So we had, I'd initially scheduled it, so our public hearing is the 29th. I'd initially scheduled it for the 30th, Council of LAF and pointed out that it's in close proximity to the 29th. I'll entertain conversation on the date or if you have any questions about the budget process at all, fire away.
I, I'm sorry, what's that mean?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, like I said, I'd rather do May 7th, I think especially, you know, we hear all this tonight and we're talking and we're gonna hear more on Monday. I don't foresee, unless somebody's got some like miracle answers in their back pockets that they've been holding to make a big like dramatic play on camera. Um, I don't think anybody's gonna have a meaningful solution by Tuesday, so I think another week is, is helpful.
Okay, no, I think it's a, I think it's an appropriate suggestion. I hadn't considered the proximity to the other meetings, so it makes sense to me. Uh, anyone have any other conversation on that topic? So the, we'll pass the budget at our next regular meeting, which will be May the 14th. It is all within the, correct? Correct, so we have to have the, um, the public hearing, I think it's 60 days prior to the end of the fiscal year, so the 29th would be sort of like within a few days of that. Okay, perfect, if there's no other discussion, then we'll schedule the motions meeting for the 7th. Okay, perfect, can see no other business on the, please. Yes, I am. Oh, yes. No, that's a great point, I, I.
Mike, you have to start over.
No.
No, to council attest to that, that's a great point. So, you know, and part of how we got here is I looked at the, our last two years of budgets and for various reasons, and I'm not pointing the finger at anyone, but like half of the council didn't go to half of the budget meetings. Uh, just because of the, so I'm trying to create a system whereby we have, um, a more interactive process with the budget as opposed to, you know, like we had a meeting last year where we had five departments show up and no one had any questions and so they went home, so I'm just trying to, you know, innovate a little bit. Um, so all of the questions and answers that the board have asked, including the documents, um, that the board have had, that the council asked of the various departments, including the document the board had said, uh, had tonight will be on the, the town website. So if you go to the town council, um, the minutes and agendas section, you'll see, uh, there's a budget, uh, budget questions heading and then a budget addendum where it should have all the, the paperwork if members of the public are interested. So thank you very much for the reminder, Councilor Tatum, seeing no other business on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.